Board members, please take your seats. Board members, please take your seats. This November 3, 2022, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence and a performance of the National Anthem by the Poe Middle School Bella Voches under the direction of Perev Arslan.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
As the Board indicated in its statement to the community on October 21 at our last meeting, at-large Board Member Karen Kies-Gamara used an ableist slur for which she has apologized. The comment was offensive to not only the disability community, but to our entire community and especially our students. Use of the word is unacceptable under any circumstances and does not align with our values as a Board or school system. The School Board Governance Manual establishes expectations of School Board members to act with respect to all community members. Earlier this week, the Board met to discuss this matter. Board Member Karen Kies-Gamara has proactively taken steps towards restorative justice, steps the Board strongly supports and encourages. She has offered to address the issue here tonight. Ms. Kies-Gamara.
Thank you. I have asked for this opportunity to speak directly to our students, staff, special education community, and all FCPS families. I want to take this opportunity to apologize for using a vile slur that harms so many. I have not taken this moment lightly. Rather, I am actively working to learn, take restorative actions, and help improve outcomes for all students. This will never be a quick fix as the hurt runs too deep and our special education community is a marginalized group of people who also experiences inequities in discipline, access to program, and a lack of inclusion in our community at large. That's why I'm actively working to continue to bring healing to this community and this Board. I would like to thank those who were willing to meet with me and help this unfortunate experience to become a teachable moment that hopefully can benefit our entire community. I have spent much of my time listening to many parents, caregivers, and special education advocates. Concerned parents and community members have urged me to find ways to reconnect with students who are often harmed by hurtful language. Advocates challenged me to learn more and do more to promote a culture of inclusiveness where students with and without disabilities learn and grow together. During one conversation, a mom of a seventh-grade student with disabilities asked me to go beyond rhetoric to make sure that my actions speak louder than my words. I hear you loud and clear, and here's what I'm doing to repair the harm. I'm working to expand inclusive program opportunities for students and schools. I am honored to accept an invitation from Special Olympics Virginia to support and expand its Unified Champion Schools programs in Fairfax County. Through programs like Unified Champion Schools and Best Buddies, FCPS students are leading the way in changing the culture of the language we use and building bridges that connect students with and without disabilities. I look forward to following their lead and becoming a better ally in these efforts as I work to expand the reach of such programs. I will volunteer and visit special education classrooms. In the coming weeks, I am scheduled to observe a special education program for students in self-contained and in general education-inclusive settings and to deepen my understanding of the responsibilities of special education teachers and leaders working in our schools. I'm working to enhance and work on the, sorry, the Conduct Special Education Comprehensive Review Listening Session. As the Division begins to determine how it will respond to the report's findings and recommendations, I want to hear from parents, caregivers, and community members. In early October, I began to make plans to host a virtual listening session to get feedback from parents, families, and community advocates on the findings and recommendations of the three-year audit that was just completed. I will also sponsor a virtual roundtable discussion, which is scheduled to, where I'm scheduled to join representatives from the Special Olympics and FCPS students and staff to provide information about Spread the Word Inclusion Day, formerly known as Spread the Word, Spread the Word to End the Word. This virtual discussion will feature a frank conversation about the power of words we use regarding students and families. The conversation will also spotlight opportunities for students and others to get involved in countywide efforts to promote a caring and inclusive school community. And I am continuing my work to improve the culture in our schools. Last weekend, I had the pleasure to speak with our Superintendent Dr. Reed and asked her to consider developing the Caring Cultures Teams Program that targets improving the culture of our schools. This will allow our staff to develop metrics on whether our school cultures are healthy, respectful, and inclusive for all students. My hope is that such teams will provide accountability for our schools that includes input from our parents and provide a continuous improvement mechanism that focuses on how we ensure we are recognizing whether our students feel respected irrespective of their ability. Dr. Reed has already taken action on this, and I look forward to this continued work. Since my first day in office, my priority has been progressing education for all in FCPS. In light of the recent events, I want everyone to know that the children of Fairfax County, thank you, are still my number-one priority. I look forward to working with my colleagues on these important items in the days and weeks ahead. Thank you.
Agenda Item 3.02, Announcements. If you'd like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information may be found at the back of the auditorium or on the website at fcpse.edu/schoolboard/BoardDocs. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast on Channel 99 and livestreamed on the website at fcpse.edu/tv/Channel99. The solar power purchase agreement for Annandale High School and the secondary course offerings' agenda items have been moved from the consent agenda to action at the request of School Board members. I call on Ms. Togby for the announcement.
The theme for Veterans Day 2022 is honor. Honor reflects the military value and tradition of answering the call to duty. There is distinct honor in serving to protect the way of life and the Constitution of the United States of America. Veterans Day, formerly Armistice Day, is the anniversary of armistice which was signed on November 11, 1918, at 5:15 a.m. in the Forest of Campain by the Allies and the Germans ending World War I. All over the globe, there were so many demonstrations no doubt the world had never seen before witnessed such rejoicing. Veterans Day is observed annually in the United States in honor of all those living and dead who served honorably in the United States Armed Forces. The School Board directs school personnel to provide students with instructional activities that honor veterans and recognize the role of the military in American democracy. Many schools have special events to which they invite veterans and active-duty military members of the school community to join them. Native American Heritage Month started in 1915 as American Indian Day by the Boy Scouts of America. Over the years, individual states recognized Native American Days, but it wasn't until 1990 that President George H.W. Bush designated November as National American Indian Heritage Month. Every president since 1994 has issued annual proclamations designating the month of November as a time to celebrate rich and diverse cultures, traditions, and histories, and to acknowledge the important contributions of the Native Americans.
Agenda Item 3.03, School Psychology Awareness Week Recognition. The Board will invite each recognition recipient to the dais for a photo after the reading of all recognitions. I call on Ms. Darnat-Kofax for recognition.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm honored to present this recognition on School Psychology Awareness Week. School psychologists are uniquely qualified members of school teams, serving students, staff, and families. School psychologists receive specialized advanced graduate preparation that includes coursework and practical experiences relevant to both psychology and education. They apply expertise in mental health, learning, and behavior to change lives by taking actions to help children and youth succeed academically, socially, behaviorally, and emotionally. In alignment with the FCPS strategic plan and portrait of a graduate, school psychologists help individuals realize their own abilities, develop the skills they need to cope with the normal stresses of life, work productively and fruitfully, and be valuable contributors in the community. School psychologists keep students, help students develop the social, emotional, and life skills necessary to realize personal achievement and growth and to build resilience and a sense of belonging. Through the delivery of direct services using evidence-based practices, school psychologists help students build social and emotional competence and the skills required to actively engage in learning. School psychologists collaborate with many school teams to develop universal prevention and intervention practices across a multi-tiered system of supports. These practices foster resilience, increase educators' understanding of social and emotional development, reduce barriers to learning, and enhance students' protective factors. School psychologists bring knowledge of data collection and analysis to team discussions, which inform the development of interventions when monitoring student success. School psychologists intervene when students experience mental health issues which may require a thorough risk assessment, and this intervention is through individual or group counseling and helping to connect families to community resources. They are members of crisis response team and risk assessment teams. They assess and assist students at harm, at risk of harming themselves, and they teach and implement trauma-enforced practices. All children and youth can face problems from time to time related to learning, social relationships, making difficult decisions, or managing emotions such as feeling depressed, anxious, worried, or isolated. School psychologists help students, families, educators, and members of the community to understand and resolve both long-term chronic problems and short-term issues that students may face. They are highly skilled professionals working to ensure that all children and youth thrive at school, at home, and in life.
Thank you. Before I call on Board Members who wish to address the recognition, Ms. Maron has had her hand up, so I will call on Ms. Maron. All right, Ms. Maron's hand is down, so I will call on Ms. Darnat-Kofax to speak first, and other Board Members who wish to speak can raise their hands.
Thank you. I want to thank all of our school psychologists. Each of you play a major role in helping our students manage and navigate through many types of challenges. Your role to improving our students' academic success, you help create safe and positive spaces within our schools, and you've been the bridge to strengthen our family and school partnerships. All children, as the resolution states, can face problems, whether they're in the classroom, learning, social relationships, or making difficult decisions. But you're always there, ready to step in and find a solution that can and will work and most definitely will leave a lasting positive impact. I thank you for going above and beyond for our schools and our children each and every day.
Thank you. Are there other Board Members who wish to speak? Seeing no other Board Members wish to speak, I will go to Agenda Item 3.04, National Career Development Month Recognition. I call on Ms. Tolan for recognition.
Thank you. In FCPS, students in grades pre-K through 12 engage in meaningful learning experiences related to career development, including goal-setting, exploring interests and skills, project-based learning, and career-connected learning across content areas. Students have the opportunity to learn about potential careers and gain relevant experience through work-based learning activities. These experiences range from career speakers, starting at the earliest grade levels, to internships and apprenticeships in high school. Work-based learning in the high school years provides students with opportunities to make meaningful connections to what is learned in the classroom and to apply the acquired knowledge and skills to the workplace. Additionally, many high school courses prepare students for industry certification opportunities. Students who desire this professional credential must pass an industry-developed and industry-evaluated exam at the end of the course. Earning an industry credential demonstrates that the student has achieved the professional skill level, providing industry-recognized proof that the student is prepared for career-related responsibilities or post-secondary education and training. FCPS is fortunate to have a variety of personnel who serve a strategic role in our career development efforts throughout the school year, including college and career specialists, school counselors, career experience specialists, directors of student services, employment and transition representatives, career and technical educators, career and transition teachers, academy program administrators, and business partners providing work experiences, and of course, the Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee. With a focus on readiness for post-secondary education and careers, these educators and community members are employed to help students explore and develop their abilities, interests, strengths, and talents as they relate to further education and entry into the workforce. These educators collaborate with families to enhance academic and career planning for students while focusing on the individual student's skills, qualities, and academic opportunities that relate to their chosen career fields. Additionally, our schools, academies, and central office teams collaborate to establish business partnerships that will enhance opportunities for students to work with and learn from industry professionals while also staying abreast of the most current workforce trends and necessary skills in the field. Career development in FCPS enhances our students' portrait of a graduate attributes and makes a positive impact on preparing students for their post-secondary endeavors. On behalf of the FCPS School Board, I would like to thank and celebrate all of our dedicated career development professionals and partners for your leadership and collaboration in career development. Thank you.
Thank you. Would any other of my Board Members wish to speak? Ms. Togby?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of emphasize that thank you. As somebody who's taken marketing courses from my freshman year, and I've gotten close with teachers such as Ms. Hinkhouse, Ms. Scott, and even gotten to know some teachers over at Oakton, Mr. Barrow, it's truly changed my life. Programs such as DECA has taught me how to be a leader, but also has taught me how to harness the skills that I already had, public speaking, understanding the different levels of leadership and things like that. So I'm really grateful for the program. I'm thankful for all my educators that I've had within the program. And yeah, just really wanted to say thank you.
That was lovely, Ms. Togby. Seeing as no other of my colleagues would wish to speak, I would like to invite all those here in support of National Career Development Month Recognition to please join the Board for a photo. And I ask my colleagues to please remain in front of the dais for the next photo.
If you're here this evening in support of School Psychology Awareness Week, please join the Board at the dais for a photo.
Agenda Item 4.01, Community Participation. The next order of business is community participation. Speakers must limit their remarks to no more than two minutes in length. At the conclusion of two minutes, the microphone or video will be turned off. School Board Members will be listening but not responding to individual speakers. The School Board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings such as the capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Comments targeting, criticizing, or attacking individual students are not permitted during public meetings. Complaints regarding school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school officials. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student or school-based employee. Additionally, speakers should be respectful and observe proper decorum in their statements, avoiding profanity, inappropriate gestures, shouting, and comments that run counter to the spirit and letter of the school division's non-discrimination policy. All statements should be directed to the School Board, and speakers should remain at the podium until concluding their remarks. As a reminder, speaker substitutions are not permitted. A speaker may not yield their time to another individual before or during their remarks. Shouting and outbursts in the audience will not be tolerated. We are grateful for all of those who came to speak to us today, and we thank you for your cooperation.
Our first speaker is student number one.
My name is Nitro Purashottman, and I am an eighth grader from Carson Middle School. Today, I will speak about adding climate change to the FCPS curriculum. In 2018, the Virginia Department of Education updated their science curriculum. Climate change was added as a science standard of learning. But in my experience, and by speaking to others, climate change was rarely mentioned in elementary school. Even in middle school for most of my friends, climate change wasn't taught at all. And if it was, not in depth, let alone as the most pressing issue of our time. The VDOE states that students need foundational knowledge gained in elementary schools to have an initial understanding of climate change data and skills. There is plenty of teaching material for climate change, and it can be tied into other units such as watersheds, energy, recycling, and even in social studies units about democracy and rights. But climate change is rarely a topic of discussion, and most are uninformed about climate change. They are unaware of the rapidly declining carbon budget or how it's tied in with many other injustices like human rights, universal equality, and moral values. They are unaware of the initiatives that have been started to take action on this crisis and all the youth-led organizations that exist today and the FCPS climate goals. I urge you to make climate change a mandatory curriculum in at least grades five through high school and to strongly encourage elementary schools to incorporate environmental issues in their learning because this isn't just another problem. This will affect the very way we live. A school is for teaching children. And Fairfax County, as a prominent school system, can have a significant impact in educating today's kids about this crisis. What is a school for if not to educate students on the biggest problem of our lives? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is student number two.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Arielle Lee, and I am an eighth grader from Rachel Carson Middle School. My name is Arielle Lee, and I am an eighth grader from Rachel Carson Middle School. Today I will speak about moving forward with the FCPS solar program. Three years ago, Fairfax County awarded three Power Purchase Agreement (PPA) contracts for schools for solar on schools. In March of 2021, the FCPS School Board voted to move forward with the solar contracts. But as of now, no solar has been installed in FCPS schools through this program. Some schools like ours have funded their own small-scale solar projects through grants and fundraising. However, if we are to offset our carbon footprint, it will require full-scale solar on schools, starting with Annandale High School. Fairfax County has a goal to combat climate change. According to the Joint Environmental Task Force, Fairfax County and FCPS should have a 50% emissions reduction by 2030 and be carbon neutral by 2040. In addition, FCPS committed to generate 25% of its own renewable energy by 2030. To meet these goals, we have to start now. And through the Inflation Reduction Act, getting solar gives taxes in places like schools their 30% federal tax credit. During this meeting, you will be voting to approve Ipsen Solar's PPA contract for Annandale High School, the first and best school for solar listed on the FCPS solar program. This is your chance to push on sustainability, proceed with solar, and get solar panels on the other FCPS schools. Every day that passes, we lose time to take climate action. You can change that. This is a chance to move forward, so I urge you to get solar on all FCPS schools in the time ahead. I urge you to vote yes to solar panels on Annandale High School, and I urge you to make renewable energy part of our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is student number three. Student number three. Our next speaker is Yi Wu.
Hi. Thank you for this opportunity to speak, and my name is Yi Wu, and I live in Herndon. Today, I'm urging the board to implement strong measures to protect the right of collective bargaining for our educators in Fairfax County. I'm a very proud resident of Fairfax, and one thing I'm really proud of is the wonderful staff in our education system: the teachers, aides, maintenance, and psychologists, we just recognized today, and many others. We know that good educators during our early years have made a huge impact on our lives, and we are very grateful to them. The least we can do to thank them is to correct this injustice of denial of a human right to organize your coworkers and demand better conditions. This injustice, this denial of right, has gone unchecked in Virginia for 44 years, which is longer than I've been alive. I'm not 44 yet. And during which our neighbors, DC, Montgomery County, and many others' districts have respected this right. Their schools are excellent, and their staff has a higher standard of living. And we know things are expensive here in Fairfax, and I live here, so I know that. And inflation's happening, so now the cheapest place to live. And our dedicated educators deserve to earn enough to live in this community. Unions build the middle class, and it's going to take unions to save it. And you, member of this board, can do a ton of good here for not only the educators, but also students and the future of Fairfax County. We see places where collective bargaining consistently upworfing nuances without in test scores and other measurements of education quality. It attracts and keeps hard-working, high-quality educators here who are focused on ensuring kids learn well instead of worrying about food, rent, or having to have outside jobs outside of FCPS to make ends meet. That would not be good. There's a crucial need for our collective bargaining ordinance to be implemented here and passed, and not only that, the board should make sure the resolution that does get passed...
Thank you. Our next speaker is Aaron St. Germain. Aaron St. Germain?
Hello. The proposed language in the FLE curriculum "assigned male at birth" and "assigned female at birth" should not be used for children in fourth grade and up in referring to biology. We're not talking about gender; we're talking biological sex, which is not assigned at birth. It is documented; it is recorded. "assigned" implies a power differential between the one who assigns and the one who is assigned. This language follows an oppressor-oppress narrative. In no way, shape, or form should we imply to our children there is an oppressor-oppress narrative in biology. There is a time and a place for the term "assigned male" or "assigned female," but it is not in elementary classrooms nor with adolescents who are already struggling to accept their bodies in developmentally appropriate ways. Transgender students should be respected, loved, included, and given relevant and appropriate information and terminology in FLE. That can be accomplished without adding confusing language to FLE that conflates gender and sex. Additionally, as a firm believer in equity of opportunity, I have concerns that the equity grading system is not working as intended. This isn't surprising because an equitable intervention or system should be designed so resources or benefits flow in the direction of those in need. Applying the same equity framework to all children is not equity. One outcome of this policy is grade inflation. Grades no longer reflect mastery of content. Under the new grading system, student grades are higher, but students have actually learned more. Good grades are an illusion; that masks a real problem, because when everyone's grades are increased by the same measure, the same students coming in last are still in last. When grades are inflated, students can enroll in courses for which they're not prepared. According to teachers, the only option is adjust or water down the curriculum. This is a massive disservice to all students. Not only does it deprive students of a rigorous education, it sends a message that in order for certain students to succeed, the bar must be lowered. That is not the case. FCPS must actively work to boost these children up to increased educational opportunities so they can fulfill their maximum potential. FCPS should not lower the bar; they should lift students up to it. I urge you to reexamine the equity grading framework and to include teachers from all disciplines in the discussion to ensure it will not perpetuate social injustices by masking the problem rather than addressing them.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Rigby.
Good evening. I am Robert Rigby, Vice President for Advocacy of the Fairfax County Council PTA. Honored King, the president of the National PTA, has some sage words about the drop in test scores nationally. She says, "Research shows that when families are engaged and families and schools work together, students have better outcomes across all measures. Family-school partnerships also help schools. Parents' guardians and other caregivers must be key partners in their children's educational success, now more than ever. National PTA urges parents to get a better understanding of what their child is expected to learn at their grade level and where their child is academically. They should talk to the teacher about what the teacher notices regarding the child's learning, and they should provide their child's teacher in school with information about how their child is doing and the stressors in the child's life. PTA urges teachers to provide families with information on how their children are doing at school, the learning goals for the year, and what the grade level expectations are. Schools should also engage families in transparent and productive ways and ensure their voices are at the table for policy and funding decisions. Locally, SECPTA sees that our school system is doing more and more of family and community outreach, and we applaud it. Family-school partnerships can be our north star. I also want to note the prioritization of hiring more mental wellness and health professionals in the legislative program. I also urge increased accessibility to such health and emotional wellness for disabled, Black, POC...
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sean Kurth. Sean Kurth. Our next speaker is Jennifer Litton-Tid.
We've been begging people for 25 years not to use the R slur. Using disability hate speech is a choice. So is this board's decision to do nothing. So I'm here to talk to children most impacted by this cruel choice not to act. To every neurodivergent child in FCPS, we see you and justify your pain. The R slur with which too many of you are smeared daily at school is not acceptable ever. I'm sorry, truth tellers who think you matter are being maligned. I'm sorry that your pain isn't worthy of action. I'm sorry to those of you who've been subjected to restraint and seclusion, that you continue being dehumanized by behaviorism, that you are suspended and expelled at far higher rates. I'm sorry that you have been routinely denied services and supports that deny you your right to access education, that you're criminalized, that SIS reports for discipline look like rap sheets for kids. I'm sorry for SB 36, for the school-to-prison pipeline. I'm sorry the majority of non-speakers receive negligible communication supports, and that too many of you can't read or struggle to read. I'm dyslexic; I know how much that hurts. I'm sorry the discussions on equity don't include you, that talks of diversity exclude you, and that far too many of you are denied an inclusion education. The choice to not act on this was a choice to further marginalize every intellectually and developmentally disabled child in FCPS and to embolden their bullies. All of you are beautiful and worthy of dignity and protection. I'm sorry we have failed you when you deserve better. Spread the word to end the word.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Forrest Brown.
Good evening, School Board. My name is Forrest Brown, and I'm here to speak in favor of collective bargaining. I had the great privilege of attending FCPS schools from kindergarten all the way through my graduation from high school. I attended four FCPS schools and worked in a fifth during the 2021 and 2022 school years as a monitor and as a COVID case manager. While working in FCPS in the midst of the pandemic and the transition back to in-person learning, it became clear that our schools are losing educators at an unsustainable rate, exacerbating the difficulties in helping students recover from the well-documented learning loss they have suffered during the last two and a half years. Collective bargaining is critical because it is the only way to stem this loss of critical personnel from our schools and community. The failure to maintain adequate staffing levels in all relevant educator positions compromises the quality of education that FCPS is able to provide its students. The COVID-19 pandemic has precipitated a profound, multifaceted crisis in American education. The only way to prevent this crisis from spiraling into a generational catastrophe is to empower Fairfax County educators. Without a seat at the table and a voice in the discussion, we will continue to experience a debilitating exodus of faculty and support staff from our schools, to the detriment of students, their families, remaining educators, and the broader community. Fairfax County Public Schools must have collective bargaining.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Angie Treratola.
Good evening, Dr. Reed and members of the School Board. My name is Angie Treratola, and I'm here tonight to speak in favor of collective bargaining for your employees, who are my neighbors and friends. I teach in a neighboring district, so I know the fear of retaliation all too well. I speak to you tonight as a parent, a taxpayer, and voter of the Springfield District. I'm here to ask my elected officials and the staff they hired, what is their plan to give my son and his friends the best education possible? This means giving your staff a seat at the table. Some are afraid of what collective bargaining could cost FCPS, but instead, we need to talk about the unseen costs of delaying a collective bargaining resolution, the incalculable loss of highly qualified educators, our human capital to other districts and professions. Effective educators and ESPs require training. No training is more effective than the power of on-the-job experience. There is no training that Pearson or any other corporation can package and deliver that will instantly provide five, 10, 15, 20 years of experience. To a new employee, the reality is veteran educators silently carry the burden of training, supporting, and mentoring new employees outside of contract hours. What causes the instructional and operational staff to leave the largest county in Virginia? They're tired of not making enough to afford to be able to live in Fairfax County, because the cost of living has increased faster than the wages have. They're tired of being asked to do more for less. You have a very simple solution: pass a meaningful collective bargaining resolution that is transparent. Bring everyone to the table. Make these negotiations public so all stakeholders are aware of what collective bargaining can and can't do for our educators. Stop discussing it behind closed doors. If you do not do this, you will have more vacancies next year. We are asking this county to give their educators a voice. If it's the legislators, let's work together to make these changes possible, or they will leave you to the district that gave it to them last week.
Thank you. Our next speaker... Our next speaker is David Walrod.
Good evening, Chair Sizemore Heiser, Dr. Reed, and members of the board. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. The remainder of my time will be spent reading direct quotes from the February 20, 2020 School Board meeting, where all 12 of you stood up in favor of stayoff. My time will probably run out after about seven quotes, so I will email this full document to the board tomorrow. Chair Sizemore Heiser, you said. And I see the difference between that and the other teaching job that I have, which is not unionized, and so I firmly believe that we have a quality of teachers because of our union where I teach, and I think that will be reflected here in what we are able to do in Fairfax County. Mr. Frisch. At a time when so many teachers are leaving the profession, we need to have a competitive advantage in the marketplace, and allowing teachers to come to collectively bargain together will give them a sense of responsibility over their own destiny, as well as a voice in the process that decides the reasons that people become teachers in the first place. Ms. Keys-Gumara. I understand the importance of workers feeling that they not only have a voice, but that they are respected and valued, and that's what this language does. Dr. Anderson. It is time to ensure that our teachers are feeling as valued as we say they are. Every single day, we say that. Ms. Maron. If collective bargaining is what teachers need, then that's what we're delivering. We just can't expect our teachers and staff to carry some of the burdens we ask them to without at least meeting some of their needs. Ms. McLaughlin. I hope the General Assembly is successful in that I also hope everyone in the public understands that it should be welcomed when we signal that employees having a shared voice means that the community as a whole benefits, and most importantly, it's going to be the students. Ms. Cohen. We are great because we have built this Commonwealth on the backs of people who are willing to work to do whatever it takes to put food on the table, to take care of their kids, and it's time we take care of them. So I stand in solidarity today with my colleagues, in solidarity with everybody who makes this Commonwealth the amazing place it is, and I am about out of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jake Warrenfeltz. Jake Warrenfeltz?
Hi, I'm Jake Warrenfeltz. I'm here to speak to advocate towards collective bargaining. I'm new to Fairfax County. Moved in the last year, made a lot of new friends, a lot of other parents, and it seems like a lot of transplant parents that moved to this county move here because the school system is one of the best in the country, and that their kids, regardless of where they grew up in the past... Here in Fairfax County, they know that their kids have a real shot at a future. They have a real... They have a real future, you know, to look forward to. And the education system here is top-notch, and I don't understand how we could keep a balance of having a great community and a great school system without the student or the teachers having a voice through collective bargaining to help ensure that everybody has everything they need. I'm not much for public speaking, so I'm going to cut this very short. Thank you very much for your time and for doing what you do.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Daniel Hong. Daniel Hong?
Good evening, School Board. I am Daniel Hong, and I am...
I am Daniel Hong, and I am in support of collective bargaining. As a former student of FCPS and a resident of Providence District, I believe in educators and their power to change students. I had the privilege of having so many awesome educators in this district, and I'm glad that I met them. Would the experiences be the same for students that come after me if all my experienced educators leave? I want them to have autonomy so that they can make the best decisions for students. I still remember fondly in the fifth grade being able to use and eat food for science experiments. Educators are the backbone of our generation, and they deserve all the praise in the world. Unions protect their rights and allow them to drive so that they can provide the best education possible. I believe in educators and their right to organize. I beseech the Board to pass a resolution approving of collective bargaining for the sake of our educators.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephanie Lundquist-Aurora.
Thanks for the opportunity to share my views with you today. With each meeting, we, the parents, your constituents, are left wondering if you're listening to us. Just this week, I emailed three of you to find out why the open meeting on Tuesday was canceled. No response yet. I thought it was especially honest of you when you didn't even pretend to care about our views during the last meeting. You pitched the Critical Race Theory Resolution, ironically called something like "The Truth in Education Resolution" before community participation. I guess you didn't really feel the need to pretend you cared what we thought in that meeting. It was obviously controversial, given that the resolution was gutted and the rhetoric was replaced, but you didn't want to listen to us beforehand. Not very inclusive of you. Today, as you discuss spending, I'm guessing you will continue to ignore parental pleas for more focus on academic excellence. In fact, that topic doesn't even seem to come up in your meetings. If you would at least try to think about and prioritize learning loss and plummeting test scores in spite of equity grading, we'd appreciate it. Also, since it's open period for comments now on the proposed changes to the family life education curriculum, I would like to say, are you kidding me? Coed sex education and a gender transitioning unit in elementary school are not appropriate. Putting boys and girls together in a class to learn about sensitive topics shows that you don't really care about the comfort of the vast majority of FCPS students. And pushing a gender transitioning unit beginning in fourth grade is just one example of FCPS dysfunction that makes national news. Fourth graders should be learning long division, not how to medically transition. Please use common sense and vote no on these proposed changes. For those of you watching now, if you'd like more in-depth coverage of these topics in simultaneous livestream, please tune into the Shadow Board at USANOW.TV. USANOW.TV. Thank you very much.
Please, please keep your voice down. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kim Putins.
I wish Karen was here, but if Karen was here, I would address her and say, I actually am probably in the minority here that doesn't believe that she should, after calls for resigning and being censured. Because frankly, if we're going to set that standard, then we should have asked you to resign or be censured for your anti-Semitic remarks. We should ask Melanie to resign and be censured for her remarks about Asian heritage because she went to Benihanas. But I can definitely give you a reason why you should probably all resign. And you all need to resign because of the deplorable decline in education. We have a nation's report card that just came out, and Virginia lost 10 points in math, 10 and 11 points in math and reading. Where's the apology for any of that? Where's the apology that what you have done to kids because you decided to keep schools closed and you gaslit all of us, all of us parents who tried to raise the alarm bells about what was happening during virtual learning? Where's the apology for any of that? Where's the taking ownership for that? At least Karen took ownership and responsibility for her remarks. At least she owned up to it. None of you have owned up to it. And let me also just point out, I am the one that did this. I am the one that sat through 53 hours of these School Board meetings, and you never once talk about academic learning. You never once talk about learning laws. You never once tried to address it. But and your solution is tutor.com, which is a disaster because only 1.6% of the students are even using it. But let's also talk about one thing you do talk about on here: school safety. But you talk about it in terms of gun violence because we've got a virtue signal about gun violence, right? But let's talk about what's happened over in school safety. We had a stabbing at Mount Vernon High School. Last year at West Potomac, we had a kid die in our school over drug overdose. We had a kid die because they committed suicide. What about violence like that? Why aren't we addressing that, those issues? Stop with the virtue signaling. Get to work on academics and real school safety.
Thank you. We also have three video submissions. Our first is from Harry Jackson.
Hello, citizens of Fairfax. Thank you for having me join you tonight and talk about the topic of criticism or the lack thereof that the School Board is willing to tolerate. We saw then on October 6th that they were willing to have the cameras prominently display the faces of those speakers that were before the Board speaking in favor of a policy. Yet in the next meeting, on the 20th of October, they reverted the cameras right back to the back of the heads of speakers that were critical of some of their positions and other positions. Yet, on the 18th of October, they mentioned, well, we need to engage the community. Well, here's a platform. As I'm speaking to you now, I'm actually, we're actually streaming the School Board meeting live, and you can join us on the Shadow Board. And you can sign in, and you can have your voice heard. You are not limited to simply two minutes to speak on any topic.
Please keep your voices down.
Hopefully, this will help the School Board engage with its participant community. In fact, we invite our members of the School Board to join us. Thank you.
Our next video submitted by Leslie Houston.
Good evening. I am Leslie Houston, President of Fairfax Education Association, a union representing thousands of your employees. In May of 2020, after the senseless murder of George Floyd, this Board was enthusiastic and eager about areas of equity. There are so many controversial issues that are impacting teachers, and FCPS continues to send the message that they are backing away from this important and necessary work. What happened to the Board, who was committed to anti-racism and anti-bias education that imparts the knowledge, skills, and dispositions that lead to prejudice reduction and collective action for a more just world? Educators were optimistic and thought we, together, would move the needle when it came to the promises of anti-bias and anti-racism. Instead, we are witnessing a Board who are not focused on the main things: the kids, the educators, and the staff. On Thursday, October 21st, the spirit of educators was broken when you watered down the Teach Truth in Education Resolution. However, you will have an opportunity to redeem yourselves when it is time to pass a strong collective bargaining resolution. When that resolution comes to this Board, I encourage you to remember the educators and staff who supported you during the pandemic, who stood by you when your constituents called for your resignations, who helped to elect you because they believed you would make a difference. Bring this strong resolution to the public and pass collective bargaining. This is a crucial time in Fairfax County Public Schools, and your leadership is needed now more than ever. The ball is in your court. Thank you.
Our final video submitted by Shelley Arnoldi.
Hello, my name is Shelley Arnoldi, and this is the fifth time I've spoken at a School Board meeting since January of this year, and I hope this will be the one that earns a response. I'm going to start with a true story from a parent of a third grader attending Waynewood Elementary School. In the first few weeks of this year, my friend reported that a boy had been harassing her daughter, calling her names, using profanity, kicking her multiple times in the stomach and legs, tripping her, and even stabbing her in the arm with a pencil, which drew blood. The school's response was to separate the children, pull the victim out of line if she found herself near the boy, and offer her counseling. The mother asked if the boy would be punished for bullying, and she was told no because there was no imbalance of power. These are eight-year-olds. Your policy is a disgrace. Today, I am speaking on behalf of a newly formed chapter of Moms for Liberty. Moms for Liberty is a nonprofit organization that welcomes anyone with a desire to stand up for parental rights. The founders are former School Board members who are committed to unifying, educating, and empowering parents to defend their parental rights. The primary goal is to engage our communities and elected leaders on key issues impacting our families. And one of our founding missions is to hold elected officials accountable at all levels of government. We believe it's important to hire educators who will teach our children core subjects such as math, science, English, and active U.S. history. We value school sports that provide students fair and safe competition. We also believe the best path forward is one built on meaningful in-person communication, which is sorely lacking in Fairfax County. Last week, I attended one of the superintendent's community conversations, and there were less than 25 parents in attendance, which, besides the school and teachers and staff. We badly need actual community forums and town halls where parents are properly notified and community members understand what's happening. Our group hopes to engage parents and facilitate participation so you can receive critical feedback. We look forward to working with all of you to ensure we're raising one of the best-educated generations of children in the nation. That's a win for everyone involved, especially Fairfax County.
Agenda item 4.02, Strategic Plan Update. I call on Dr. Reed for an update on the strategic plan and on academic matters.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Bev. Are you queuing? Oh, thank you, Laura. All right, so I'm excited this evening to have an opportunity to share our strategic planning update. Laura, let's go ahead. One of the things I want to share with you is that we are opening our student survey window, and a special thanks to our student School Board member, Michelle Togby, and her younger sister, I believe, for doing the voiceover for our elementary students. And Michelle did a fabulous job of just doing a video clip to let our secondary students know the importance of their voice being included in our strategic planning work. The survey is intended to measure student perceptions and elicit student voice on a number of topics related to engagement, school climate, student-teacher relationships, and the quality of their educational experience thus far. All student responses are intended to be anonymous, and the aggregate information are going to be, it's going to be included in an overall student voice report that a number of our committees will be looking at: the Core Planning Team and Alignment Committee, as I shared at our last Board meeting. So one of the things that we, the Board, provided us, a number of recommendations related to the survey, and I want to remind you that we incorporated those, which include the creation of instructional resources to help students actually understand what a strategic plan is as they prepare to take the survey, an adapted survey to support participation of students who have disabilities or special needs for support, and student voice in soliciting student voice. So Laura. We're also, I want to call out Marcy Neal, who's here this evening, and Frances Ivy, who have worked tirelessly with Mutu Fubai to focus on our principal professional development as well. And between now and December 2nd, each principal at all 200 schools will be leading a focus group with a representative sample of 15 to 20 students in their building. We had a fabulous day of principal training and all-division principal meeting to address the topic of strategic planning and our excitement in having that North Star direction to guide us as we think about the educational experience for each and every one of our students moving forward. Families of students who've been identified for these focus groups will need to provide consent for their student to participate in the process, and students have to provide their consent as well to participate in the process. Essentially, there are four basic questions that we're planning to ask students in the focus groups: what is going well, what is not going well, what matters most to you, and what is the one promise you would like the adults in your life to commit to regarding your education? All of the student responses, again, are anonymous, and they will be entered into a Google form that will be incorporated as another piece of open-ended student voice. We heard the Board feedback about providing students with opportunities to lead similar discussions, and we're looking forward to having some student-led student voice discussions in the coming days. Laura? All right, the Instructional Focus Team is also seeking nominations. We'll be sending out a form, or perhaps we have. I can't recall which, but we have. Thank you, Dr. Presidio. So this team is going to be made up of educators, teachers, instructional assistants, principals, those who work closest to educational tasks, right? In the classroom and the schools. We're in the process of finalizing the composition of these teams: the Core Team, the Alignment Team, the Family Team, and the Instructional Focus Team. And I want to again thank you, the Board, for continuing to share ways that we can tap our community as we engage in this work. We anticipate about 100 to 125 educators who are going to serve on this Instructional Focus Team. The majority will be teachers and other school-based instructional staff, instructional coaches, resource teachers, and instructional assistants, for example, counselors, DSAs as well. This team's going to be charged with identifying professional practices that are intended to enhance instructional effectiveness. In other words, what are those high-leverage instructional practices that are going to make a difference and continue to enable us to maintain the premier division status? You may have seen in yesterday's employee news that we put out a nomination for these forms. The deadline for nominations is November 11th. So for all of our teachers and instructional staff that are tuned in tonight, hello, and we encourage you to consider this opportunity. Again, thank you to Dr. Sloan Presidio and Megan Borman, who are co-championing this team. We're really excited about this work. And lastly, Laura, on strategic planning, as we think about looking ahead, our champions for the Family Team are also working to identify a similar process of nomination for parents, families, and caregivers to self-nominate or be nominated by a member of our school community. I appreciated one of our speakers this evening, Robert Rigby, talking about the importance of partnerships with our parents and PTSAs, and we really want to advantage our strategic planning process of these partnerships. I encourage those listening this evening to check out our website for ongoing updates and ways to get involved and tune in to the November 14th and November 29th, well, the 14th Board meeting and November 29th work session, where we will continue to share more information on the strategic plan. So I'd be happy to answer any question on our strategic planning update, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Bukarski?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Reed. This is very exciting. Just a quick question. With the survey and so many of our students who are English-language learners or who may not be able to interact, what are we going to do to make sure that we're, you know, capturing that student voice? Could you share, please?
Yes, we are working very hard with our Office of Communications and Community Relations Department as well as our Chief Experience and Engagement Officer Departments to make sure we have interpreters, family liaison, support, and translations of surveys and in our focus groups.
Thank you.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. Reed. This is a very exciting process. The last time that we undertook a major revision of our strategic plan, actually, the very first real strategic plan in the county was two boards ago. And so this is absolutely the right time to be looking at how we ensure we have a school system that meets the needs of all of our students in this century versus previous centuries. So I think this is really important work. When we spoke last about this, we talked a lot about centering the student voice, but also ensuring that we had real and meaningful input from all members of the community about what the aspirations are for each of our students academically. And you and I have talked many times about the fact that children will probably change their careers four or five times during the course of their lifetime. And so how do you see the strategic planning process developing a plan that takes into account the ever-changing needs and builds into our curriculum the academics as well as those skills that are important for resiliency and adaptability going forward? That's my first question. And the second question is, one of the most successful parts of being in Fairfax County is the unique partnerships, not only with our not-for-profits, but with our business community. And so if you could talk a little bit about how we're going to ensure that we take advantage of the existing business partnerships as well as future partnerships, or widening the net of partnerships.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. I think the two questions are interrelated, right? The idea of being adaptable as a school division is so important. The world is changing more rapidly today than it's ever changed in our history. We know that sixty-five percent, I know our staff could quote that now, right, sixty-five percent of our K-12 students across the country are preparing today for a career that does not exist. And we know the skills our students are going to need to thrive in this world, yet to be imagined, are skills that are important to our staff and to our business community and our community at large, right? Critical thinking, problem-solving, collaborative skills, communication skills, all of those are critical. What we're hoping to surface in terms of hearing from students and parents, business community, nonprofits, electeds, all of our different sectors, we have a variety, obviously, in Fairfax County. We're so blessed to have so many community partners that we expect what will surface between now and the first of June will be many ideas that we will synthesize into what we believe our North Star for our work here in Fairfax County is going to be. I think nimble and adaptive have to be characteristics that are going to describe in education here, for sure.
And I very much appreciate that you have integrated into all of our business meetings the opportunity to update not only this board, but the community on the journey that we're all on together. So, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Ms. Cohen?
Thank you so much. We always appreciate getting to hear from you. And those of you who have more questions, I hope that you will get involved and come to our town halls, and we would certainly love to have more than twenty-five of you in a room. One question that I had, well, first, I just wanted to say to Ms. Togby, thank you for all your work in trying to get students on board. If you all don't know, Ms. Togby is now a movie star and has made a series of shorts to get our students engaged and let them know why this is important. So, we're going to put her to work in making shorts on everything from voting and all, right? You're in for it, okay. I also just wanted to make sure to piggyback a little bit on what Stella was saying, that we make sure that we include case managers, our CAT-B teams, ATS folks, to make sure that our kids who use AAC can answer some of those questions. Not all of our kids may be able to answer all of them, but I guarantee you, they probably have some pretty exceptional thoughts around what they would like to see and what they would like their teachers to know about them. So, thank you so much for really trying to make this whole process as inclusive as possible for everybody in our community to have an opportunity to participate, and we're counting on you to participate. So, thanks so much.
Thanks, Ms. Cohen.
Mr. Frisch?
Thank you. I want to zero in on the instructional focus team. I think this is, you know, the critical piece of the puzzle here. Because these folks are going to be, you know, designing instructional practices that inform everything we do. And the whole point of the strategic plan is how do we align our resources and our focuses and everything else on this?
Right.
So, when I see that the way that we are soliciting self-nominations for this is through newsletters, I get nervous. Because what ends up happening, I'll tell you from my personal experience, we appoint various people to our advisory committees, and when I have an opening, I always send emails out. When I include a blurb in a newsletter, I might get one person to apply. When I send a standalone email about it, I might get a dozen people to apply from Providence District. So I would just encourage, if we want to have a cross-section of our faculty and our staff represented, we should be doing some direct contact about this issue specifically. Otherwise, I think what we end up with are the folks who take the time to read a newsletter and those who are identified by staff and encouraged to apply. And if we want it to be self-nominating, that implies that we want, you know, a full breadth of people from different facets of our system involved. So, I think we should focus on that.
Yes, sir. I think that's absolutely correct. We want as many perspectives as possible at the table. I think the strength of this plan is going to be the diversity of thought that engineers it. So, appreciate that feedback.
Ms. Hernakovacs?
Thank you, Dr. Reed, and I too am excited about this update, but I do want to follow a little bit on Mr. Frisch's comments about promoting it. I looked here on the main webpage, and while, once I Googled "strategic plan," it came up, but it is not on the very front. And I would think that's extremely important as far as marketing and promoting it. It's quite robust when you get to it, but you have to know to look for it. So, may I make that suggestion?
Thank you, Ms. Hernakovacs. Point taken. We'll be on it.
Thank you. Ms. Amish?
Thank you. Happy to follow my colleagues. You know, it's often difficult when we communicate to the public. We use big, big terms, legalese and systemese and whatever. So I kind of just wanted to give you the opportunity to break it down a little bit in simple language. What is the strategic plan? We're here to shape a vision, right, for FCPS and how we're going to use our resources. But then more specifically, you shared with us the phase that we're in right now, right? So you described for us a particular stage in a longer process that's already been ongoing. So if you could just contextualize that a little bit for us, I think it'll help the public follow where we are.
Thank you, Ms. Amish. We are in the launch phase. We're sort of in that, it's a bit of an overlap between planning and launch. So, we have a team that is working with Mutu Fubayi to plan our journey from now until the first of June. As we've intended, the board in our first business meeting in June, we're hopeful that we will be able to affirm and commit to our division-wide strategic plan. So, at this point, we're starting with student voice and surveys as we solicit input for the various teams, the instructional focus team, the core planning team, the alignment team, and all of those that you recall from our last meeting, or if you're watching this evening, it's posted on Board Docs from our last meeting. But putting these teams together, the core planning team will be meeting for two full days prior to our winter break. They'll be looking at the data from our surveys as the survey data begins to come in. We're beginning with our students. We're also planning to survey our staff and our families and our community. So we're going to be able to take that data, the core planning team, and the other teams will have an opportunity to look at that, as will the board. So, as we march into January and February, the student focus, well, the student focus teams will have been completed by then as well. So we'll be doing more community-wide conversations within each of your magisterial districts, as well as at-large meetings, both in-person and virtual. So there are many opportunities for our community to participate in this process, even if they're not on one of the core teams. So, lots of opportunity for input, synthesis, and then sending data back out to community meetings and then back into the committees. Remember, the core planning team is the hub, and all the information will continue to go from them out to meetings and back. And then you'll continue to get reports, and I'll continue each meeting to provide updates of where we are. But I appreciate the opportunity to just say, we're planning, launching, and we're going to be moving January, February, March, synthesis, April, May, and decision, June.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Reed. And this is part of a division-wide process to, again, rethink how we want to prioritize resources and things moving forward for the division. So, great. The only other thing, I think in piggybacking off of a couple of things, you know, Ms. Cohen mentioned special ed instructional staff specifically, and a few others mentioned other pieces, I'm wondering if, you know, the targeted universalism model that we talked about, right, in thinking of how we develop policy that serves everybody and anticipate the ways it may have, you know, shortcomings from an equity standpoint, if we can employ that in how we do our outreach, too. So I know folks were mentioning different examples of how we do that outreach, but, you know, if we have a team of instructional folks, that that be proportional to perhaps the populations we serve. So if, you know, a third of our population is served by X program, a third of this committee, perhaps, should be represented by folks like that. And then wrapping around by making sure that those who are most vulnerable are also not overlooked and have a voice in some way. So, I just want us to be thoughtful about how we're even setting that up. And as we get community interest in folks who want to have a voice, finding a way to no doubt to include all of that somehow, but then in terms of who ends up being a part of that core team, that it be representative, yeah, our processes be just as representative as we hope our outcomes to be, right? So, that's all from me. But thank you so much. I'm excited about where this is headed.
Yep, thanks, Ms. Amish, and I think that's wise counsel.
Ms. Tolan?
Thank you, Dr. Reed, for the presentation. Just a couple of quick questions. Maybe you can tell us, I was recently going over the list of organizations, businesses, community groups, et cetera, that, you know, we're hoping to get input from. Can you just talk a little bit about how that will happen? Like, are specific invitations going to those groups to participate in larger meetings? Or how do you envision that happening? Because we have so many people we would like to hear from.
So we are sending, and thank you, Ms. Tolan, we are sending invitations out to a variety of community groups, several hundred, actually. And so the invitations are going out, nomination forms are going out. After this evening, we'll reevaluate email, newsletters, social media, all the types of channels we might provide that information. But we really want as broad a base and capacity for voice as we humanly can get, and we anticipate, you know, clearly, tens of thousands of people involved in either survey, virtual, in-person, committee, or public comment to be informing this plan.
Awesome. And one of the things I mentioned in our work session on this, too, is, of course, I support all of the instructional staff and our school-based staff being involved so that we can really look at the student success portion of this. But we also have so many employees in, on the facilities and transportation side, and I just really feel strongly that we want to make sure we have forums to hear from those people.
Absolutely. And our staff will be surveyed as well, as well as focus groups. So, every single member of our Fairfax County staff team is important, and their voice is important. And I just want to take a minute to do props to our Human Resources Department, Marty Smith, Sherry Wilson, and the team. This is the first time our staff engagement survey is going to be taken by every staff member, including our substitutes hourly, and every staff member in the division. And I'm just really proud of our HR department and their inclusive approach to the staff engagement survey this year. We're really excited to have an opportunity to look at that data.
Awesome, thank you. Look forward to seeing this unfold.
Great. Seeing no other board members who wish to speak, I have a couple of questions myself, Dr. Reed.
Yes.
I really appreciate all the information. I'm super excited about the student voice and our community voice, and I really encourage everybody to get involved because we are a community and we need to set our vision together as a community. And I appreciate that there's an adaptive survey for our students, but I wanted to encourage you to think about the tweeners. Often when we look at adaptive in our system, we've often talked about sort of our self-contained CAT-B kiddos, but there is a whole set of special education students who are neurodivergent, who are in our genetic classes, or in our two E students. And I look at these questions here on slide three, and they're very open-ended inferential questions.
Right.
And I'm a little concerned that some of our neurodivergent students who some, and I'm generalizing, of course, are very literal and have more difficulty with these open-ended questions, how are we adapting this to be inclusive of the lived norms and communication styles of neurodivergent students? Because I think there's some room for universal design of learning in these questions and perhaps thinking about the tweeners, right? I think we're very often adaptive for this group and this for this group, and there's a whole spectrum in between.
Right. So, thank you, Madam Chair. I think, to Ms. Amish's point, I think we need to make sure that our process for developing our plan reflects our values in our ultimate plan, right? So I think, I spent quite a little bit of time this morning in a conference with family discussing a communications challenge, honestly, and we have, it's not just translation materials that enable our students or families to access surveys or access the ability to provide input. We also understand there are a variety of communication challenges, continuum, if you will, that we're going to need to really be thoughtful about. And I don't know, as I stand here this evening, that I have an answer for that, but we will find an answer and make sure that our student voice solicitation is inclusive, just as we expect our final plan to be.
Well, I would encourage you, we have a neurodiversity specialist that I championed on the board, and I would wonder what was the role of the neurodiversity specialist in being involved in this core team in developing this work? And I wonder, there may be a role there for that person to be involved in developing this work. I think there's room for a whole team of neurodiversity specialists, but right now we have one. But I would encourage you to perhaps consider involving them in the core team, if they aren't already.
It's suddenly come to me that that would be a good idea to involve our, yeah, neurodiversity specialist. I just think that we have to think differently about not just what we do, but how we do it. So I'm excited to have that. I think it's a great idea.
Well, I'll look forward to following up with you on that after we look into that. And also, I mean, we're talking about developing caring teams at schools. I think, really, the neurodiversity specialist is a great person to make sure those caring teams are understanding of neurodivergent students. So, thank you. But just when we consider those questions, I worry, I can think of how my own kid would answer those questions, and it may not be as what he's really thinking.
Right.
Thank you.
Fair point.
All right, thank you. Seeing no other questions on this part, Dr. Reed, I'll have you turn to the second part of your presentation on academic matters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of the things about this topic, I think, is really important is that, I mean, you as a board, we spent, we spend a great deal of time in work sessions discussing academic matters. We've spent a great deal of time, I know, out in schools, visiting with teachers and educators, liaisons, principals, assistant principals, division staff. And what I, what I'm going to try to do is be responsive to real-time academic issues just in sort of a brief moment at the board table and offer you also an opportunity to be thoughtful about some of these topics. And I welcome the board also defining sort of topics as we move through each meeting about something that we think might have interest across the division academically and/or data that might be helpful as we think about our strategic planning process, because it's important that we have accurate data from which to contemplate and have discourse around the educational purpose that we have. I mean, we're here primarily to support strong educational outcomes for each and every one of our students. That's our fundamental mission. And I know with all the time that you all put into that in a variety of work sessions, my purpose this evening is just to identify a couple of data points and be thoughtful about those with you. First of all, I want to share that our regional assistant superintendents today had a retreat where I sat in briefly. Dr. Ivy was with our regional assistant superintendents and folks from our instructional services and our executive principals to look at school-by-school data on early literacy this fall. And what I really appreciate about the conversation today was the real-time data. This was data from this fall to the beginning of the year to the end of first quarter. So I need you to know and to understand, and our community to know and understand, that our principals, that each of you with your regions, as you've met to review data with each of the region assistant superintendents, that we were drilling down even deeper than the data that you've spent time, countless hours at Gatehouse with staff looking at data. But today, we were drilling down on early literacy data. In other words, how specifically is our reading with our youngest learners, our kindergarten through sixth grade? And it's fascinating, as we look at school-by-school, where do we need to be strategic about resources and support? And I'm just inspired by the work that I saw today. So that's the first point. The second point, Laura, are you working with me again? I just wanted to share a perspective about data regarding our NAEP scores. And I want to be clear, because one of the things that I realized, I was in a meeting this morning, which mirrored a meeting I had last week. Last week, I was with several community members who thought that the NAEP scores represented Last week, I was with several community members who thought that the NAEP scores represented all of our students in Fairfax County testing. And I wanted to be clear with you as a board in our community that we actually had 476 students out of our 180,109, or actually, we're 181,000 now, 181,109 students. We had 476 tested, which is less than 2% of our student body. In fact, I would say across the entire state of Virginia, we had about 3,500 students tested, of which that is still less than 2% of the population of students across the state or the Commonwealth of Virginia. So what I've been told, as I met with our data staff here in Fairfax County, is less than 2% is not even statistically significant in making an inference or drawing conclusions about our instructional work as a division. I also want to share that it's very difficult to use NAEP data as actionable data because we don't receive it as a division. It comes back by state or by certain large urban districts around the country who've asked for it by district. We certainly are one of those that can do that in the future. But again, with 476 students and only 23 of our 200 schools participating, it's not what we would consider the most credible data point for us to plan instructionally forward. I will say, on the other hand, that we did have about close to 27,000 of our students tested, which is about 14% of all Virginia testers, which a total was 187,000. And you can see on the slide what the Virginia pass rate at fourth and eighth grade for reading and mathematics, and where FCPS's pass rates were for reading and mathematics. Having said that, we know that almost 80% for fourth and eighth graders in reading and between 70 and 80% in math is still not where we want to be as a division. As a premier division, we have work to do as we come out of the pandemic. But I want to remind us that the 30% or 32% that the NAEP provided for the Commonwealth, not for our division, is based on less than 2% of the students who tested in the Commonwealth. So I just want to make sure we keep a perspective as we think about that. And the second slide is, when we think about Fairfax County and sort of other assessments, I just want to thank our instructional services department for reminding us that the PISA scores, for example, which are an international assessment, the PISA scores actually look at 90 countries and economies and evaluate over 3 million students globally, that our students still exceed the PISA rates for the United States and the global average, which is pretty impressive. And again, it measures 15-year-olds' ability to use reading, mathematics, science, and the knowledge and skills to meet real-life challenges. Exactly the skills we know our students are going to need to thrive in a world yet to be imagined. I want to remind our board and celebrate with you that last spring, in 2022, both our SAT and ACT scores exceeded the Virginia, United States, and in the SAT, global averages. So I feel like while we have work to do and our staff stands ready to do that work, our educators here in Fairfax County are garnering amazing results educationally, and we look forward to continuing and building on those traditions of excellence. So be happy to take any questions from the board.
Ms.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Cornell, can you put the slides back up for us, please? Thank you. Mr. Frisch, followed by Dr. Anderson.
Thank you. So one of the focuses of our board has been on the science of reading, you know, with a focus on literacy phonemic awareness, phonics. One of the things I've heard while visiting elementary schools is that one of the things that's holding back the fidelity of implementation of all the work that we've been doing is the lack of approved instructional materials. And I know several months ago, we were, you know, we were ready to buy new instructional materials as a system. And then the Virginia Department of Education kind of stepped in and said, they're going to work on a approved list.
Correct.
It's been months. Do we have any update on where they are with that approved list?
I am told that they are back to work on contemplating the approved list. There are other divisions that have, other states, I guess, that have approved lists. Colorado came out very early with an approved list. We did, I was at a conference earlier this week where the governor and our secretary of education, as well as our superintendent of public instruction in Virginia spoke. And I know that's a priority for our Commonwealth. In the meantime, our instructional services department is creating lessons and materials that, and many of our educators are getting the letters training to really support our Science of Reading initiative. We know there's great value in that work. So as soon as the Commonwealth, I don't have to be, I guess, blunt, Mr. Frisch, I don't have a, like, a deadline, timeline for the state, but I know they have committed to picking that conversation back up.
Well, perhaps we, as a board, can send them a letter to encourage them along.
Right.
Because it's critical to our work here. And it's one of the things that was bipartisan coming out of the last session, was the work around Science of Reading and literacy. So it's been a focus of this board, and perhaps we could encourage them along because Tik Tok.
Right. No, and I couldn't agree more. I know I've been with several of the board members out at elementary schools recently, and we have watched educators use some of the new materials. And I agree, we just need to get those last pieces in place.
Thank you. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. You referred to the early literacy data that the region superintendents reviewed today during their retreat. Can you drill down into a little bit more details in terms of what assessments did they review and what were the findings? You didn't really give us those, that level of specificity. I just want to learn a little bit more.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. They were looking at I-Ready data in this case, and the assessment data, they were looking at growth data, which is different than necessarily achievement data in the moment. So they were, we were looking at a quadrant, honestly, four quadrants, where it was low performance, low growth, low performance, high growth, high performance, high growth, and low performance, high growth. Right, four different quadrants. And all of our elementary schools and regions were there so we could look at where are our students performing less well and more well, and where are we seeing the most growth across the division? Do I have any of those documents with me tonight? No, I do not. But as you work with your regions or the, your magisterial districts, I know they would be happy to share that with you. And again, this is preliminary data, but what I really am so inspired by is it's early. We're not waiting till the end of the year to come to you and report. We're looking at this data in real time and looking at where students are and what are we doing? What are the resources and interventions and instruction that we're providing? That where is that making a difference, and where do we need to allocate more supports? So that level of strategic focus is really critical. It always is, but particularly now it is.
Thank you. The growth that you're referring to, are you sharing that staff was, staff-reviewed comparison data, meaning I-Ready scores from the last school year into this year? I, I'm not following the growth that they reviewed.
There's data, and I apologize for not having the charts tonight. I sort of popped in today for a short period of time, meeting to meeting. But they were reviewing I-Ready itself as an assessment, and I may not say this right, so I may have to phone a friend. But the data where students were, there's a calculation to get them to grade level, and there's an amount of growth that must happen in increments to get students back to grade level. And so we were looking, I believe, at that grade-level data. In other words, what is the growth that a student had to make? And then they extrapolated that across grade levels. So we looked at K1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, right? All of the grade levels and then all of the schools. So we looked at it in a couple different ways, cut the data in a couple different ways.
Okay, I have a follow-up, but something you just said just intrigued me. This was provided from K to 6? Is that correct?
That would be correct. Is there a friend I can phone? I would, Noel Clemente.
It was likely grades 1 through 6 of I-Ready data.
1 through 6.
Yes, then that's what it must have been. 1, yes, it was, because they were 1, 2. And what was interesting, just FYI, is that our younger children, I think, yeah, we're just looking at our grade levels as well. So thank you, Ms. Clemente.
Okay. And thank you for that explanation. I'm somewhat familiar with I-Ready because I review my children's very, very closely. But I was kind of honing in on grade 6, because you also provided this to the 6th graders that are in the middle school at Holmes Court in Glasgow? Okay. All right, thank you. The other piece that I wanted to speak to with this is this wonderful chart. Dr. Presidio, if you recall our email exchange back in early September, was requesting this exact information. So thank you so much for, for sharing it, because I think it's really good to set the contacts.
Right.
Because I think we had a lot of fervor around the NAEP and providing kind of a sense of how many of our kids are impacted by this assessment, and what does it mean? And what does it mean in comparison to other assessments? I think it's a real key point that you've done this evening. The only thing that I would add, and I know everybody can, can do the math a little bit, but we had the percentage of students that were tested in the NAEP. I think we need to have the similar percentage in FCPS, not just in Virginia, on the other side.
So for which, oh, on the other side? Maybe I do in my notes and didn't read it. Let me look. By the way, Dr. Presidio and his team put the slides together, and I was thrilled they were able to do that. But you're right, if I do have it, I can't find it. So, but I will make sure we have the percentage of those on the other side. Yep.
But this is really very good stuff. Thank you to all of you for providing it.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. Reed. This is fantastic. You know me and my data.
I do.
And I, we've gone through the data for each of the schools in the Mount Vernon Magisterial District and overall Region 3, comparing that data to the county-level data as well as to the state-level data, and had significant conversations. I think the one piece that I'm, I would add to this chart is that when the NAEP is administered, there are no accommodations provided. And so it's something for people to recognize and understand that that does also have an impact, even though this is a very small subset of our population that is a different approach than how SOLs are. But one of the things I'd like to talk a little bit about is, we know there was significant learning loss. There was significant learning loss in places where schools were closed. There was significant learning loss even in places where schools were open. However, looking forward, which is really what our students need us to do, because it's how do we react to or respond to the triple trauma that our children experienced, is how, what do we see in our growth, in the growth of our students? You know, if the data is correct, we know that kids across the country have lost more than a year's worth of education, some longer, some shorter. How do we see Fairfax County students, the pace of growth because of the intentionality of the instruction by our staffs? And I know you're going to go into more detail on this when we talk about ESAR, and I do have some questions on that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. And you're correct, I think the ESAR report is going to share some of those strategies and details. I will say that I continue to be impressed with the dedication of our educators, both the school-based educators and the central office-based educators. The intensity in the room I was in today, there was a laser focus on what are we doing to not just encourage, but accelerate the academic growth, particularly in reading today? That was the focus for elementary.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Bukarski?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Reed, and thank you to your staff for spending countless hours with us individually going over this data for each and every school. I appreciate this. I think it's important for our community to understand the differences. You know, the devil is always in the details. Generalization really gets us into trouble. What I would like to ask, you know, parents see this, you know, looks great, but they're thinking about their kid, and how is my kid impacted? I need to understand my kid. Now, I've heard from some parents that that means in their schools, they have gotten very in-depth, detailed scores of I-Ready and some other assessments that are being done. In other schools, they have not. And I've brought this up before, there doesn't seem to be kind of a uniform approach to this. And, and also just not a very clear understanding, when we do provide these to parents, what exactly are they saying about their student? I've just, I've, it was timely that you brought this, because I've heard from several people that they were worried, because they were not sure what this meant. So I've said it a couple of times, and I wanted to make sure that I say it tonight, that it would be wonderful to, you know, I would like to get some of this data for my kids. I know many other parents would like to, and to then have a clear understanding of what does, what does that look like? What does that mean for my child? How do you use this? So I think there is space for us to do a better job of that, you know, taking it from this and, and making it really impactful for the family and the child.
Thank you, Ms. Bukarski. And I agree with you, and that's on me, as we navigate this year to determine what's tight and what's loose. And definitely, it's going to be critical that, now more than ever, that our parents, families, caregivers, and students know exactly where they stand and what are their next steps to take their game up, right? So I know the staff is in agreement, and so we're on that. And particularly parent conferences right now at the end of the quarter, that was one of the reasons to make sure we have growth data, right, to share with families. So, and with students, right? It works best when our students know, here's where I am, and here's where I want to be, and here are the things I can do to get there. So we're on it. Yeah.
Great, thank you. Ms. Tolan, then Ms. Maron.
Yes, I want to thank Mr. Greenfelder and Dr. Presidio for spending time with me recently to talk about this data and these different types of assessments, and what does the data really mean, and, you know, how should we be looking at this with our school district? So thank you. And thanks for putting these charts together. This is super helpful. I just couldn't help but thinking, associated with our ESAR presentation this evening, I'm imagining our RASs in this meeting, you know, talking about all the schools and what's happening at each particular school, a school-by-school. And you may already be doing this, is cross-referencing that, that school data and how we're spending our ESAR dollars, or how we're spending in other parts of our budget. You know, the, our ESAR funding is super important, but it's a small percentage of our overall budget. So the combination of how do we really be smart as we're watching our ESAR funding and moving into our budget process? How do we take, you know, what happened today and that really close look at what's working at some schools, and what are they doing, and what are they spending money on? And how do we think about, you know, compared to what other schools are doing? How do we, I guess, share the, share what's working?
So great question, Ms. Tolan. And we, I like to talk about the ROI, our return on investment, and I think that's exactly what you're addressing. What is our ROI for the strategies we're using at School X? We do have 141 elementary schools, right? Yes?
A few more than that, I think.
Right, 141? So, and the, look at the graph of all of them, it's really provided a rich conversation, for sure. I also think, to go back to this original slide, I think it's very important to look at the specific data, because I actually have met people who thought that all our students were being tested, and that's that NAEP, you know, assess everybody, and it's really, that would be a misnomer. So ROI is critical in looking at individual test scores, and I think Dr. Presidio and his team will have some data for you this evening around the impact of different strategies.
Right. But I think the data we're looking at tonight is from last year.
Correct.
And so I'm just excited, these conversations are happening right now for this quarter.
Right.
And we talked earlier about being nimble and, you know, being able to move quickly. And we talked earlier about being nimble and, you know, being able to move quickly to adjust, to meet our students' needs. So, I'm sure you guys are all working on that.
Well, nimble and adaptive, and Mr. Greenfelter was in the meeting, so there was a lot of data work going on, for sure.
Excellent, thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Maron?
Yes, hi. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
We can hear you.
Yes, great, thank you. So, you know, I think that standardized data will give us standardized results, but the work that we're trying to do in Fairfax County Public Schools is not merely standard. So, you know, I'm thrilled to hear this presentation, Dr. Reed, and I'm eager to share it widely. You know, our families do want to know how their children are performing and they want to know using measures that are accurate and meaningful. And so, I think it's really critical to explain to families, the public, and even our own staff what these data are really showing. You know, staff has also voiced to me a question about the value of this data in terms of weighing it by the burden of implementing this test. You know, it's just one more test that our staff have to carry and students have to do instead of, you know, more meaningful and valuable learning time. So, you know, I think the board has a role to play in continuing to investigate the value of standardized tests and the role of the test. And I remember what you said, you know, when you first derived, Dr. Reed, about 20 years of producing standardized education under No Child Left Behind, and we need to break that mold. You know, relatedly, I just want to share that, you know, the data that we looked at about accreditation just prior to this round of, you know, more higher-level data coming out is, you know, the stories about what works, they can't always be distilled to a percentage and a number, but there are amazing stories. And as we look to ESER, you know, and analyze how to, you know, continue using those funds and what it's producing, the funds are producing gains, but it's up to us to better tell the story. That's our responsibility. So, I am eager, like I said, to share your explanation and these slides out as widely as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Maron.
Thank you. Mr. Nekofax?
Yes, Dr. Reed, I just wanted to thank you for this new addition. This was your idea to bring this forward to us right now in this fashion at our meetings. And while this isn't a work session, this gives us the opportunity to address issues and speak the truth to perhaps rumors or innuendos that are out there and what's happening. So, I look forward to this. Are you planning on making it a regular part of each week or are you going to do it monthly? Or have you thought that far out yet?
Our staff is actually pretty excited about the opportunity to share our real-time academic work, particularly now this year as we are engaged in our strategic planning because we know these data points are key in defining where we are and what our community expects from us moving forward. So, I believe we're planning short snippets of critically important and obsessively interesting academic data each meeting.
Well, no, I appreciate that. And as we talked about this in the chair, with Chairs and Vice Chair Meeting, you know, I was unaware that only 476 FCPS students were, that was not a data point that I was aware of. So, thank you, because that is a huge difference about interpreting what, you know, what success or not we have with our students. So, thank you, and I just look forward to continuing this work together.
You bet. Thanks.
Thank you. And this is not a work session here. We'll have more chance to ask questions around data when we get to the ESER presentation on Agenda Item 4.06. So, I will just briefly say thank you for this. I think this is a great addition to our meeting. And from that, I will go to Agenda Item 4.04, Student Representative Matters. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Omish. I thought you, I've, Ms. Omish.
My light. Okay, no worries.
I didn't see it.
No, no, it's fine. Okay, so, thank you for this, and I think that this is always, you know, reviewing the data, basing our work off of that is always critically important to give us the right perspective or adjust our perspective. But just a couple of things, I mean, my colleagues spoke to the importance of nuance with looking at the data, all of that test score is not being reflective. I think these are themes we're aware of in how we view it. But, you know, one, I remember one of the things I really appreciated about your vision when you came on was that, you know, we shouldn't just be kind of measuring who made it and, you know, how we're able to just overcome that threshold to stay accredited and stay above water, but really, how are we getting everyone to a higher level of success, right? So, that's just something to think about. To me, I don't necessarily celebrate this, though I am reassured by this, right? So, it's telling me that we're in a place where we're above average, which is the bar I'd expect for us, right? But I'd like to see that number be higher. And then, I also want to disaggregate that data to think about, one of the things in the region meetings that I had with our various staff on the data was that sometimes we look at adjusted, sometimes we look at unadjusted data, right? And then, we also, data is hidden for certain groups, so maybe the data is actually telling us that we're not doing so great in how we support certain academic programs, right, or certain categories of folks, namely, sped ELL, lower-income kids, and actually, Black and Hispanic students as well, in terms of what the data has shown us. So, how can we kind of target efforts and be intentional about addressing those pieces? Because maybe if we were to break that 77% or whatever it is down, we see that we're doing a good job for the average kid, but where are we when it comes to certain gaps? And why, right? Trying to diagnose to be able to address. So, that's just something I wanted to name because it was a point of some frustration in, you know, my colleague and I's meetings in the regions. And then, finally, putting this in context because absenteeism was also up in a number of the schools and impacted some of this, I know, in just conversations with our Region Assistant Superintendents. So, something to think about just in honing in on where the problem areas are to see those numbers go up. But I know that's the lens you're bringing in anyway, so I'm grateful for your work. Yeah, thanks, Ms. Omish, and you're right, that we need to be really strategic in our approach. Yep.
Thank you. Now, actually not seeing any more lights, so for first comments, I will go on to Agenda Item 4.04, Student Representative Matters, and we'll have an ESER presentation where we can ask more questions. So, I will call now on Ms. Togby for Student Rep Matters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone, and happy Thursday. It's Week 11 and also the first week of the second quarter, and I'm so proud of all the students because we made it, first quarter down. Last week, I got to film a video explaining strategic planning and the importance of it, and I have to say, it turned out really amazing. I haven't gotten my Oscar yet in the mail, so I'm waiting for that. I got to recruit some students in Region Four to be in the video. I have to say, I'm glad we were able to put our sports rivalries aside. Special shout-out to Ms. Peck, the leadership teacher over at South County. She certainly was able to help me out with getting students there, and she also, in my opinion, carried the video. And if you haven't seen it, go check out FCPS's Insta and YouTube. I know they already left, but I have to highlight and thank the students that were here earlier today. You guys were absolutely amazing, and I'm super thrilled at how involved you guys already are. They're both in middle school, and I thought that was pretty cool, and just keep up the amazing work. I want to talk a little bit about the relationship between student groups and the board and the leadership team. As someone who's worked with our student, our Equity Ambassadors and our SAC reps for the past few years, I'm really familiar with the dynamic. And I have to say that both these student groups, like they put in a lot of time and effort researching topics and gathering data, and only one student group gets to present their findings. That's SAC, and even when they do, there's kind of a bridge in communication in the sense where they don't know, a couple months after that presentation, was any of that information considered? Would they like to do further research? Should we be more involved in the planning stages of even maybe like adapting some of those policies that were proposed? So, I'm really hoping that the structure of SAC and CEALs are reviewed to make sure that their work is taken to another level. I also got to briefly talk with Dr. Reed about our current hiring process and recruitment, and I was able to gain more of an understanding, which really helped me with my perspective. But I was able to meet with our Equity Ambassadors and discuss where we can kind of be better. Together, we looked into the use of satellite campuses, which I had no idea anything about it originally, and when we were doing our research, it was interesting to see what could be done, pretty much. And as always, thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you. As always, it's wonderful. Thank you very much. Agenda Item 4.05, Superintendent Matters. I call on Dr. Reed.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and lots of excitement since last we've met, since our last meeting. I want to share that I have visited Glen Forrest Elementary, Weyonoke Elementary, Westfield High School, Bull Run Elementary, and Virginia Run Elementary, and had a fabulous time at each school. Actually, found out one of our schools had woodchucks as their mascot, and since Groundhog Day is one of my personal favorite holidays, just really excited now I have a place to go to celebrate Groundhog Day. I know, it's how much wood, yeah. Anyhow, just so excited. And the only sort of traumatic classroom experience, one of our choral groups at the elementary was practicing a song about snow, and I had to be reminded that the weather could be changing and I may have to make a snow decision soon. Also want to share how excited I am to have an extra hour this weekend. I know staff will utilize that to spend a little extra time on assessment and other strategies, but just a reminder that daylight savings time, I think, is adjusting, and so remember to keep track of our clocks this weekend. I was very excited to spend lunch out at Lake Braddock Secondary School with our, since it is our, we honored our Career and Technical Education Programs this evening, our FCC LA, Family and Consumer Science Programs, and Skylar Kim, our state, Virginia Commonwealth representative, was there. Ms. Cohen joined me for that event, and it was quite an exciting event, excellent food, and we learned a lot about the leadership program. Also had a chance to attend the Mount Vernon and Hayfield football game last Friday, where we had a halftime parade with a Jedi dinosaur. I thought that was somewhat metaphoric. And did have a chance to spend time also at Annandale High School at the Special Olympic Soccer Tournament Saturday morning and got a chance to get out on the field and kick the ball around with some of our athletes, and they were well-attended. It was a fabulous morning and a beautiful fall day. Most recently, community conversations have taken place at West Springfield, Langley, and West Potomac. We still have several community conversations left as we complete those. I want to remind the board that we are receiving Narcan within our schools. I noted that in my Division-wide Weekly Reflections note, and I want to share with the community that the Division is hosting a webinar on November 10th from 10:00 to 11:30 entitled, "Everything You Need to Know About Opioids," and we really encourage families, parents, and caregivers to attend the webinar. It's free, but we do ask you to register, and it's designed to inform and raise awareness about the dangers to children and adolescents on this topic. And I think it's very important, not just here in Fairfax County, but across our region and country, as this is an epidemic right now, and we need to, as a community, come around our young people to keep them informed and safe. It's a devastating epidemic at this time. I want to make sure that our Veterans Day is next week, and want to make sure that folks understand it's a district-wide student holiday, and our schools will be honoring our veterans the week of November 7th. Please check with your child's school to see exactly what they have planned. This is an important day, and I hope that many of you are able to take advantage of being so close to DC by visiting different monuments that have been erected in honor of those who've given their all for us. And then, I did also, with a number of board members, have the opportunity to attend the John R. Lewis Leadership Program Event. Lewis High School Principal Alfonso Smith hosted, board members, community members, and members of the late Congressman's family. I think for a really inspiring event that showcased students and staff and the work they're doing to develop that leadership program. And lastly, I just want to share that Catherine Johnson Middle School was again recognized by the Virginia Naturally School Recognition Program by the Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources for the ninth year in a row. Other schools that have been recognized are Daniels Run and Providence, and this is really an exciting time for our schools. I finally want to share that tomorrow I will be attending an event in Washington, DC honoring Mosaic Elementary as being named a Blue Ribbon School, and it's honestly a big event. I think they're one of nine schools recognized this year. So, again, just big props to our educators across this division that continue to be highlighted at the national level for excellence. And that is my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. Quite the busy schedule. Agenda Item 4.06, ESER Update Presentation, and I will call again on Dr. Reed for the introduction.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The ESER III update I have been looking forward to, honestly, for quite a while. It's, and so, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Presidio, who will introduce the team and the presentation. Dr. Presidio?
All right, well, thank you, Dr. Reed, and good evening, everybody. We're going to do the presentation up here from the gallery this evening, if that's okay, because we've got quite a few folks that are going to be helping co-present, and hopefully, the audio is okay. It seems like I'm getting a little bit of an echo, so I'll try to get a little bit farther away. But I'm kind of going from my right on down the row here. I'm joined by Noel Komenko, the Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Services, Esther Ko, our Auditor General, Leedy Haruda, our Director of Research and Strategic Improvement, Dr. Evangeline Petrich, our Executive Principal and ESER Project Director, Rich Polio, our Director of ESOL Services, and Michelle Ferrera from our Office of Research and Strategic Improvement. So, this obviously is a team effort, and we're very happy to be able to have this opportunity to present to the board and the community tonight on the work that we're doing around ESER. I'm sure, as you'll recall, this is not our first ESER report. This is actually the second formal report that we've provided to the board. The first was back in February of 2022. So, we're definitely committed to ongoing updates about this work throughout the entire funding period of ESER. But probably even more importantly than those updates to the board and the community is the opportunity for the community to have input and provide feedback on what we're doing. And we did have a public hearing earlier this evening on ESER III. We had a number of folks who came out to speak to us, and I just wanted to say thank you to all of them for taking the time to share their thoughts and ideas that will definitely inform our work moving forward in this project. So, what we wanted to try to cover tonight is just a couple different things. We, of course, want to give you some updates on the programs and services that are happening as a result of ESER funding. We also are going to look at a detailed spending report. We know there have been questions about the current level of ESER spending and where our budget is currently at. And then, Esther's going to provide some information on the auditing process that her office is doing to track ESER spending. And then, Leedy and Michelle are going to share a detailed report. We only have a few slides in the presentation for this evening, but they did a comprehensive, detailed report looking at the impact of the ESER-funded activities on student academic and wellness outcomes. And then, we'll, of course, try to provide some information about how we're using that ORC report to improve our programs and services for this school year. So, I just wanted to start out by providing a little additional context around ESER funding. I do think it's important to note that ESER funding is separate from the funding that we have in the FCPS operating budget. The ESER funds are supplemental funds that we've received from the federal government, provided to school districts to do two things, safely reopen schools and then sustain the safe operation of schools as a result of the COVID pandemic. The other thing that's really important to point out is that these funds were intended to be used over a multi-year period of time, so a multi-year investment. The federal government understood that the impacts of the pandemic were significant on students and that schools are going to need funding for several years to be able to address students' academic and wellness needs. So, our spending plan is in alignment with that multi-year strategy. We have until September of 2024 to expend all of our ESER funds, and we've developed both our programming plan and our spending plan to meet that timeline. The ESER grant itself has some specific funding requirements, and largely, what we're allowed to spend on is related to academic and wellness supports for students as well as COVID mitigation and prevention efforts. So, we developed our spending plan with those requirements in mind, but I just want to remind everybody, there was a lot of community involvement when we developed our initial plan. We had public hearings, we had lots of opportunities for folks to provide written feedback into the plan as we developed it. And the initial plan was approved by the board in August of 2021. It was then approved by the state in September of 2021, and then December of 2021 was the first time that schools actually started to receive any of this ESER III funding to support those school-based needs. So, I think even though schools didn't receive their funding essentially until almost halfway through the school year last year, we have seen some positive impacts, so we're excited to share just a to share just a few examples of the impact of ESSER spending last year. And the first thing we wanted to share was this chart that shows our SOL results from the last three years of testing. You'll notice that school year 2020 is missing, and that's because there was no state testing in school year 2020 because schools were closed. And we certainly recognize that SOLs are just one way to look at our pandemic recovery efforts. And certainly, as we talked about with the data that Dr. Reed shared during Academic Matters, we understand there's a lot of work that we still need to do. These results are not where we want them to be or where we would expect them to be. But I do think you can see from looking at the data that our schools have shown a lot of growth on SOLs during the last school year. You can see here that we're continuing to significantly outperform state averages, and we've also made greater gains in closing pandemic learning gaps than the state has as a whole. So specifically, if you look at reading and math outcomes that are largely the focus of what schools are using their ESSER dollars to address, our reading performance is almost back to pre-pandemic levels, and our math performance has eliminated half of the pandemic learning gap in just a single year. So there is a lot of good news here, and we certainly recognize that there's a lot more work that we need to do. I wanted to just share a little bit about, of course, how schools are spending their ESSER dollars, and essentially overall, you can see from the slide here that the majority of funding, over 70%, is targeted to academic and wellness supports directly to students in our schools. So those ESSER funds are used to provide additional staffing for small group instruction or individualized instruction, one-on-one tutoring with the students that have the most significant learning needs. Those ESSER funds are used to extend those learning opportunities beyond the regular school day. So there's a lot of things that are happening during the regular school day to get targeted supports to students that are demonstrating need, but we're also extending those supports before school, after school, or in some cases even during the weekend on Saturdays. So the image that you see here is actually an embedded video. We won't take a look at it tonight, but it's from WUSA Channel 9 that did a report on the Saturday Academy at Glasgow Middle School, and it's just one example of the types of things that are happening outside of regular school hours to support student learning needs. Students are getting wellness and SEL supports as well. It's not just academic support, so students are getting things like mentoring and workshop opportunities to develop resilience and help them with developing skills to manage stress and emotions. So there's a lot of really positive things that these ESSER dollars have been able to provide in terms of supports to our students. The other thing that's a major spending category for us is really building that long-term staff capacity to better support student achievement. And Mr. Frisch spoke a little bit about the significant changes that we're undergoing as we work to align our literacy programming to the science of reading. That's a significant shift in practice that requires sustained professional development. So we've used our ESSER funds to target professional development in those areas. And last year, ESSER funds helped us provide that intensive literacy training in letters and Orton Gillingham training to over 1,200 teachers across the school division. Similarly, in math, it's important that our teachers are equipped with strategies that are going to promote their efficacy in supporting students' mathematical understanding and learning. So we were able to use ESSER funds to train over 900 teachers in evidence-based programs like AVMR training in math last year. Wellness, of course, is another area that is something that we're asking our educators to address with our students, so we've been able to support them with training and professional development in things like responsive classroom and how to effectively run advisory programs and create those classrooms and cultures and climates that are really focused on being responsive to students' needs and to being inclusive. So I want to provide just a little information then, as we think about the multi-year nature of this grant, on some of the things that we're doing this year. And, you know, we're making strong gains, but we, of course, have a lot of work that we need to do. And one of the things that I've really appreciated this year about, in particular, about working with ORSE and Leedy and Michelle in particular, is they've been able to really collaborate with us to get us information in a timely manner. So Ms. Tolan mentioned that this ESSER report is, you know, it's a look back. It's, you know, how did our students do last year? And it's coming to you now, but that's largely due to scheduling purposes. A lot of the underlying data that's in this report actually was provided to staff from ORSE in the late spring, early summer, to really help us think about our planning efforts for this school year, and that's incredibly important to help us maximize the effectiveness in use of these dollars. So some of the things that we saw in that ORSE analysis really led us to continuing to target and prioritize our funding in four key areas, these division instructional priorities: continuing to dig into language arts and math recovery efforts, focusing on those SEL wellness needs, but also trying to get back to portrait of our graduate outcomes, just as Dr. Reed was talking about, those skills that we know that our students need to have to help them prepare for those jobs that don't even exist yet today. And we want to make sure that we're focused on engagement, enrichment, and equitable access and opportunity to those types of learning experiences, not just to recovery efforts. So we're really trying to balance all of those things and use our ESSER dollars to support all of that. But of course, I think one of the big things that we realized from the ORSE report, which is a growth area for us, is the fidelity of implementation to some of our programs and practices that are part of the ESSER project. So for example, we really need to make sure that we have strong implementation of the same evidence-based programs and practices consistently in all of our schools and classrooms. So one of the big things that we focused on to support that fidelity of implementation is the school improvement process, the school improvement plan itself is a big lever for us this year. So I want to share just a little information about what that process looks like with you this evening as well. So one of the big changes for us this year is we've taken a much more coordinated approach to school improvement planning. It's a collaborative effort across our academic departments, as well as the regions, collaborating with the schools to enhance the process itself. One of the big enhancements or changes is we've moved the school improvement process to a quarterly process. So instead of setting yearly goals and targets at the beginning of the year and then checking to see how we did on those at the end of the year, we're actually doing quarterly checks every nine weeks. And part of what Dr. Reed was looking at in that region meeting today was looking at some of that data that's part of that quarterly check to make sure that we're on track and on target and have a good understanding of the growth that our students are making or where we're still seeing gaps that need to be addressed. So we've formed division collaboration teams that are working with all of our schools to support these quarterly data reviews as part of the school improvement process, where schools will look at their data, reflect on what's working, and adjust and revise their strategies and activities as necessary based on what their data is telling them. And our central office teams are providing that targeted coaching and support by going into the schools and supporting them in their areas of need. It could be one school has particular challenges at a particular grade level in reading that they really need some additional support on. Obviously, that same scenario could be true for other content areas like math as well. So that's a big enhancement and a big change for this year. The next part of the presentation tonight really is focused on our spending updates, so we want to provide a little information about what our spending plan looks like. Unfortunately, Lee Burden was not able to be here tonight. She's representing the district at a chief financial officer's event, national event, so she's representing us at that. I'm going to do my best to walk you through the spending plan, so bear with me. But the chart that you're seeing here really represents our current three-year spending plan for our ESSER III funds, and you can see that there's 29 different initiatives that are in the approved spending plan. The majority of that spending, about 77%, is targeted at school-based initiatives. So again, those academic and wellness supports that schools are providing, after-school programs, a large chunk of money for summer school to extend the school year for students who need additional learning opportunities, and teacher contracts for special education teachers to do additional work to help special education students recover. So when you look at FY '22, kind of looking backwards, that first column of the chart there, you can see, for example, at the bottom that we had a total of $53 million in expenditures for FY '22. Those expenditures are actually a little bit less than the amount of funds that we had originally budgeted for FY '22, but when we built our spending plan back in the summer and submitted it finally and finally got it approved in September, and then we didn't get the actual funds until December, a lot of time had gone by in that course of that fiscal year that caused us not to be able to expend some of those funds. So we did have a significant amount of carryover for FY '22, and like any multi-year grant, when you have carryover, those funds just roll over into the next fiscal year, and you reallocate those based on the needs that you have. So we did go through a process, and the board approved our FY '23 spending plan. A few of those adjustments from carryover funds that we were able to make, significant investment in summer learning programs, so $18 million we budgeted for our summer school program that took place last summer, that allowed us to dramatically increase the amount of students who attended summer school and to provide summer programming at most of our school locations. Additionally, we had $6 million in FY '22 carryover that we were able to apply to additional funding and support for schools' academic and wellness allocations, and allowed us to continue with classroom monitor funding for this year. So when you look at kind of the bottom line of what's our budget look like for FY '23, you see at the bottom that we've got $123 million budgeted for FY '23. At the end of September of 2022, just less than a quarter into the year, we had spent $22 million of that budget. So we do think that we're on track to probably expend most of those funds during FY '23. If we don't, then we'll have funding available that will roll into FY '24, and we'll work with the superintendent, and the superintendent will work with the board to identify the funding priorities for FY '24. So before we leave this section, Lee did ask me to take just a minute and talk a little bit about some of the statements that we saw in the media recently about the spending pace and the spending down of our ESSER budget. So we want to be really, really clear that for folks in the community that saw any of those reports, the numbers that were reported were the reimbursements back from the state, not our actual spending. So we expend funds, and then we submit to the state to get those reimbursement dollars back. There's always a delay. So from an accounting perspective, when we're looking at reimbursements, it's reflecting less than what we actually had spent. So when you look at our overall ESSER III budget in terms of what we've spent, we've spent down 40% of our ESSER budget. Over a three-year period of time, we had anticipated that we would expend about a third of those funds each year, so we're a little bit ahead of schedule or essentially right on track to spend down all of our funds by the grant expiration period in September of 2024. So hopefully that helps a little bit on the spending side, and next I'm going to turn it over to Esther to talk a little bit about the auditing process.
Thank you, Sloane, and good evening, everyone. So the Office of Auditor General, we are an independent audit party that reports directly to the school board, and we have conducted continuous monitoring on the ESSER III expenditures. So this continuous monitoring reviews were approved by the school board for the audit plans in fiscal year '22 and '23. And here are some of the key testing attributes, areas that we focus on. And the first one is time and effort. So in order to trace it back to the previous chart about the spending, time and effort considered the major components, which consider like the contracts, the salaries, and the stipends, et cetera, that we looked at. We also looked at the procurement requirements as well. And then we also looked at the financial reconciliation reports. For example, as Sloane mentioned, there's a process where we reconcile the financial statements together with the reimbursements received from the states. So we looked at those reconciliations as well. We also want to make sure that the spending is in compliance with the approved plans by the board. So with that, here is the first ESSER continuous audit result. And again, similar to some of the reporting tonight, it is a little bit looking back that the result that we have here is for fiscal year '22 through January 31st of this year only. We have using a stratified random sampling, meaning that we looked at different categories of expenditures and selected accordingly. So as a result of this review, it appears that the internal controls, meaning the checks and balances, to making sure that the ESSER spending is accurate, we, it seems to be like the transactions appear to be allowable, and OAG did identify some opportunities for the management to consider. They are related to the pay bands, related to the accuracy of some of the supporting documents, and also we encourage the management to have a central repository of all the documents. This report has already been presented to the Audit Committee earlier this year in June. And then I want to foreshadow a little bit about what we are doing now, about the current year continuous monitoring. So definitely, we are looking at more transaction testing, and the audit is going on right now. We are also looking at the work that completed by the external financial auditors, because as part of their audit plan, they are also looking at the ESSER III expenditures. So we want to collaborate with them and looking at what they do to strengthen our continuous monitoring practice. And then we are also working, checking with the management and see if some of the enhancement that we stated here have been improved or not. So that's what we are working on now, and I would like to hand the time to Leedy.
So thank you, Esther. So the highlights of ORSE's report are here. I wanted to point out that this is a 50-page report that provides a lot more details than we're able to go through tonight, but we'll go through some highlights of it. There's a link in here if you do want to see the rest of the report, and there's also page numbers that we've tried to add, so it's easier to kind of track down which of these slides go with which parts of the report. The report itself covers four main questions. One of them is around how is the ESSER funding used to support student progress, also looking at what kind of participation there were in the ESSER-funded activities, the progress that was made by our students, both in terms of growing as well as hitting some of our proficiency benchmarks, and then looking at the infrastructure or the supports that FCPS put in place in terms of processes to make sure that things were supporting or how it was supporting or constraining the efforts of the school division. I also want to point out that Sloane mentioned there were 29 different projects. This report focuses on three of those projects, but those three cover roughly two-thirds of the funding for ESSER that was intended to be spent over the course of the grant period. And many of the findings, as Sloane mentioned, were shared back in July to make sure that staff had time to try to incorporate any kind of improvements or changes for this year. And at the end of this, we'll go back to Sloane where he can talk a little bit more about what some of those changes were. When we move on to the next slide, it shows some of the data sources that were specifically used to look at the school allocation information. That's the information we'll be going through today. There's also an appendix that covers more information about the special ed teacher contracts. So here's the different sources that were used. I want to point out, in particular, we tried to get a lot of school-based staff to help inform what we were doing. We got community input, and that we used a lot of the existing data that we had in terms of assessments of academics and wellness. This first slide gets into how schools actually use those allocations, both on the academic side as well as on the wellness side. Here again, in the upper right, if you want to look at the report and get more details on it, there's the pages that match that report. So one of the important things, as Sloane mentioned, were the allocations were actually provided mid-year, and so the supports and interventions were already being provided, but this was, these were additional things that were happening and supported by the ESSER funds themselves. Some of that, some of that funding supported things that were happening in the classroom, sometimes with all of our students, sometimes with some students who needed supports and interventions, and some of the things were supporting things outside of the classroom where students were getting additional supports and interventions outside of the classroom. When we look at the budget's funding here, the academic side of it, there was a focus on trying to provide funding for those external supports outside of the classroom, and you'll see that the plurality here, 42% of the funds, were used to provide small group interventions and supports, and that would have been outside the classroom. There's also the adult-led one-to-one support and computer-led one-to-one supports that also would have been outside the classroom. But some of the money was also being used to support what's listed here as indirect student support around the notion that, for the most part, teachers were getting professional development from these funds that were used to support students primarily inside the classroom as well, to support the special needs that happened due to the pandemic. On the wellness side, you can see that 40% was actually used for what's listed as tier one instruction, and that's because on the wellness side of it, there was a, there was a focus in trying to make sure that all of our students were supported by the ESSER funds and trying to get wellness supports into that area. So 40% was used for those tier one So 40% was used for those tier one instruction on the wellness side, and then another 29% was, again, primarily used for professional development to support teachers' ability to support students with wellness. So this next slide gets into how did our students perform? And I know we were just looking at some data in terms of other slices of it. So this is trying to look at, when we look at our students, what percentage of them made at least one year's worth of growth? And I think Dr. Reed, when she was describing the iReady assessment, talked about that's one of the ways that you can look at it. So this was looking at a lot of the assessments to make a determination of what percentage of our students made that one year of growth. And you can see that majorities of our students who are identified, and those are the ones that are included in the dark teal on this slide, that they, majorities, made the one year's progress. It was roughly, two-thirds of our students made reading progress and roughly 80%, a little above 80%, made mathematics progress. And you'll see two different teal bars. One of them is focused on central identification of students. Many of those students may have gotten support in the classroom that was supported by the ESER funds. The school documented very specifically got supports outside of the classroom. But you can see that it's roughly comparable information in terms of our students who needed additional academic support in reading and math. The lighter blue are the students who were not identified, and you can see that close to 100% of those students made progress. So while we had majorities making progress who were identified, and that's a good thing, they weren't performing quite as well on the progress side as the students who hadn't been identified. So moving on to the next slide, this shows our students who were left still identified at the end of last year. And again, the report covers more information about the fact that we had removed a lot of students from that group of our students who were identified. But this is really focusing in on what kinds of students and what kinds of needs remained amongst the students who were identified. The tier-two students are those who needed targeted supports and interventions, and the tier-three students that are listed here needed our most extensive, they had the most needs and needed our most extensive or intensive supports in order to be successful. And you can see that roughly half of our students in that tier-two group are English learners and are economically disadvantaged students, which is a much greater proportion or concentration of those groups than we have in our overall membership. We also have a larger proportion of our special ed students. They're at about 25%. And then when you move to the group that needed the most intensive supports, those concentrations increase. And so many of our students that fell into these groups are the students that hadn't been able to get the supports that they needed in this first year. And again, remember, we're talking about a multi-year initiative to try to get them back on track and at grade level, but many of these students still needed supports at the end of this first year. Then moving on to wellness, just have one slide about outcomes for wellness. And the wellness supports, again, that were funded by ESER were often something that was supporting everybody in the school. And you can see that overall in our schools, many of the schools decreased their overall proportion. We went from having 77% of our schools have 30% or more of their students who needed wellness supports, and that decreased to 55% at the end of the year. So we saw some progress on the wellness side as well. This next slide talks about the key findings for structures and processes. And this information was the large chunk of what we had shared back in early summer to help with setting up the school system to make the improvements that might be helpful for this year in particular. So you can see that the multi-tiered systems of support, or MTSS, is listed as not consistently understood by all of our staff in schools. And it really pointed to need for FCPS to simplify and make universal what all schools should be doing when it comes to MTSS. And the focus of that work was really around trying to make sure everybody understood how to do the data-driven work with students and have it be student-focused and systematic. And some of the information in the report echoes what you had heard earlier when the consultant group that was hired to review our special ed services had spoken to that issue as well. The second thing on here is really, Central Office had developed a lot of important resources and helpful resources, but they were not necessarily well-known by everybody in the school division, and there were some issues around communicating knowledge of what existed. This is especially important to develop additional specific instructions to meet the needs of those student groups that we know are still in our tier-two and three needs, where they still need intensive or targeted support. And so making sure as we move forward and have those resources, that not only do we have the resources, but schools are very aware of what's there and the need to provide professional development to make sure that our instructional staff know it's there and then also know how to use it. We also found that majority of schools had more than 30% of students needing intervention and continuing to need intervention in reading, math, and wellness, and that this should have had an impact on what kind of instruction took place in the classroom. During last year, many of the schools were handling that independently, and so there's a recommendation that this be done more centrally to reduce that need at each individual school and to provide more central guidance on how to deal with that in the classroom when you have such large volumes of students needing that kind of support. And then lastly, schools reported challenges standing up a lot of the academic interventions. If you recall, last year with the Delta variant and the Omicron variant, there were a lot of absences in staff and students that really made it difficult to consistently provide some of these interventions and supports. And so that is something that was not something we can change, but it's something that we need to be aware of and potentially be able to have a way to adjust to that should something like that continue to happen. And with that, I'm going to turn it back to Sloane, who's going to speak to some of the recommendations, but more specifically, the response that staff made to them.
Thanks. Thank you, Leedy. And I know it's late and there's a lot of other things on the agenda, so I'm just going to very quickly go through the management response because hopefully there'll be another opportunity to answer questions that board members might have. But a couple of big things that we did, updating those curriculum resources, as Leedy mentioned, to make sure that we have differentiated targeted resources ready to go so teachers can focus more on instructional delivery and less time on instructional planning. A lot of work to really enhance what we're doing around social emotional learning with new supports. We are contemplating possibly even looking at purchasing an SEL curriculum for school year '23, '24, if we're able to find the funding to be able to do that. So that was one of the areas that we had looked at. And then with respect to MTSS, I think Leedy covered that really well. We've really enhanced and tightened the supports that we provide around MTSS with additional coaching, again, using ESER funds to be able to do that, making sure that parents are notified about the interventions that their students are receiving so that they understand what's happening and how they can help them at home as well. So a lot of work around MTSS. And then two other recommendations really around making sure that we have support for the folks that are leading this work in the buildings. Remember, we did provide a little stipend for folks that were the ESER lead positions. So we're supporting them with more professional development and coaching. And then a recommendation around increased collaboration. So I think I already talked about that quite a bit with respect to the work that we're doing around the school improvement process. So with that, we'll go ahead and wrap it up and turn it back over to Ms. Izaizmer.
Thank you, and I really appreciate the report and the time. Just as a reminder, we do have a work session rescheduled from Tuesday to November 21st on this, and we'll have really a chance to really dig into the presentation and the materials. And we do have still the legislative package coming up. So I do have three board members who want to ask questions. We will just do one round, and if it can wait till the work session, that would be appreciated. With that, I will call on Dr. Anderson, follow by Ms. Corbett-Sanders.
Thank you. I will save some of my questions since we have enough coming. I did not know that. But I did want to go back a little bit as we were talking about the prior report when you were presenting Dr. Reed, and this may be a Dr. Presidio question. As we were offering some, I guess, kudos for the contacts of the NAEP reports versus the SOL reports, can you speak to whether or not we're comparing apples to apples in terms of the content that is being evaluated in those two assessments?
So I could maybe take a first shot at that and say that there really isn't an equivalency. And I'm not aware of any alignment study that's been done on that. You know, Virginia has its own unique set of state standards that we're required to make sure are part of our instructional program, and that's how we design our curriculum. That's what our teachers deliver instruction around. That's what we assess towards. So we don't do planning and preparation for other external assessments like NAEP at all. So it really is a very different comparison when you're looking at those two tests in terms of what's tested.
Thank you. I just wanted for us to be transparent, so as we have families reviewing that data, they could also have this context. The only thing that I want to ask here, and I will save the rest of my inquiries for the work session, tutor.com, I don't know if I saw it on the budget pages. Where does that fall?
So tutor.com is not part of this ESER III report. It's part of a state set-aside grant that we applied for, that we were able to get funding, additional funding outside of this ESER grant to be able to provide for that service. So it's not actually in the ESER III spending report here. It's a separate grant that we received.
Okay. And so I will just raise the question, not looking for an answer this evening since it's not part of this. I'm just wondering, based on the percentage of students who are utilizing that resource, what tweaks and revisions do we have in the future regarding tutor.com? So I will let you sit with that.
Well, I would just say very briefly, and we can talk about it more later, but you know, that data was from April to the end of the school year. We didn't get it till the end of April, so that data is a very short period of time at the end of the school year. Students were not as widely aware and parents were not as widely aware of that service. So we're really working to push out communication about the service because clearly, you know, the feedback that we have from students who've used it and from teachers whose students have used it is all very, very positive. So we really need to get the message out that that's a service available to any of our students and make sure that it's more widely used. So that's what we're working on right now.
Would we then be able to get an update in terms of usage?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett-Sanders.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. Presidio, and to the whole team. This is a great presentation, and I really appreciate it. I did share with you earlier in the day that I would have a few questions about it, and so I'm hoping you can answer some of them. My questions pertain to the PowerPoint presentation and the information on pages or Slide 7, 21 through 22, and Slide 24. In particular, the information on Slide 21 about those identified for support showed academic growth but not as significantly as for those that have been identified but not as significantly as those that were not identified for services. And on Slide 22, it is stated that the majority of those that were identified for intervention were English language learners, students on free and reduced meals, and students with disabilities. On Page 24, it stated that there is not consistency in the implementation of the multiple tiers of support. Much of these findings are consistent with what we've seen in our SOL results as well. It seems that the data is showing that these groups of students are growing academically but at a slower rate than those that are of the non-identified students. So I'm a little worried that we are accelerating the achievement gap. My question is, if we identified the students, do we have individualized support plans for the students with scaffolding of the MTSS? And how did we or should we increase supports if an individual is not growing academically? Have you looked at absenteeism, mobility rates in the MTSS? And did the MTSS include targeted tutor.com rather than a push-out, an identification of a student needing the service, and then helping that student take full advantage of the service? And if not, can we look at doing that now? What additional items can we address to ensure that we reverse the findings which seem to be accelerating that gap? And what is the role of Central Office in this process?
Well, thank you for those comments and questions. I think they're all exactly the conversations that we're having inside our leadership team in terms of our discussions. You know, I guess I would say a couple of things to start. You know, those three groups represented on Slide 22 are English learners, are economically disadvantaged, and are students with disabilities. As you pointed out, you know, we've historically seen that those student groups have additional learning needs and we need to do more there. And every data point that we've looked at since we've been in the pandemic has shown us that those groups had suffered the most significant impacts of the pandemic. So that is the process that we're using at our schools is to identify those students by name and by need and really make sure that they're getting as much targeted support as they can. Obviously, those results that we're seeing are concerning to us, just as they're concerning to you. We know that we need to do more, and we're doing everything that we can. I do want to make one point, and I don't want to say this by any means as an excuse, but I think it is important just to put the amount of ESER funding that we're receiving in a little bit of perspective when we look at the profound needs that students in the system and across the country have. The amount of ESER funding that we have on an annualized basis is less than 1% of our overall budget. So, you know, if you did that on a per-student basis, it's like around $300 a student on an annualized basis. It's not really the level of support that many of those students need. So we can't rely just on what we're doing with ESER. We have to think about what are we doing with tier-one instruction? And that's where we've completely rewritten our curriculum to provide, you know, more actionable differentiated resources to really utilize that classroom instructional time as part of tier-one. And we're targeting those dollars for those tier-two and tier-three supports to those students who need it the most. But there's a lot of learning and acceleration that has to happen there. You know, we do have tutor.com. We are trying to use that in a targeted way. We have other personalized learning software for language arts and reading. In fact, we're even looking at perhaps adopting some additional personalized learning software so that students can get that additional support at home. The ESOL piece is huge. You know, we see the result. There's a lot of intersection across those three groups, right? So there's a lot of intersectionality there. Our English language learners didn't have those opportunities to practice their oral language during the pandemic in a virtual learning environment, and we see the impact of that. Rich is leading some tremendous work, I think, working with schools. He's meeting with every single one of our schools to look at their Weta Progress data and talk about the best practices that should be happening in the schools. We're doing similar work for special education, the Office of Special Education Instruction. So there's a lot that's happening. We'd be happy to go into that in a little bit more detail in the work session.
Thank you. And if you could address the issues of absenteeism and mobility rates, if not tonight, be ready to do it at the work session.
And those are data points that we're tracking as well. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, we do have a three-hour work session scheduled on this, so we can really dig into a lot of the questions and answers then. Ms. Tolan?
Yes, thank you. And given that we do have a work session, I really have more of a comment that I'd like to make. Ms. Bukarski and I are the meeting managers for this, so we had a sneak peek at the presentation last week, and I just wanted to just kind of throw out some thoughts that I had after seeing that. There's a lot of information in there, and I was really happy to see the volume of reporting that was generated around this past ESER spending and the recommendations for future spending. Importantly, the Office of Research and Strategic Improvement has looked at how we spent money in the past school year, and then they made that set of recommendations as to the utility of that spending. Like, did it really help kids? What do we need to do to improve? And I was so happy to hear that they had given our instructional staff in schools a preliminary look before we are seeing this. They had given them a preliminary look at the recommendations so that we could make adjustments to better serve our students when they arrived at school in August. And, you know, so just trying to turn this around and make sure we're doing the best for our students. We also have to remember that the federal government gave us three years to spend this money. So we knew that, and they knew, that we are not going to solve these issues of learning related to the pandemic in one year. We have seen some improvements, but we have a ways to go. So being, as we said earlier, being nimble and spending this money effectively over the next two years is key. I was really happy to hear about the interdepartmental teams that have been set up to make sure that this happens and the quarterly CIP reviews. And I'm excited we've got Dr. Petrich in charge of all of that. Our department- Our Department of School Improvement and Supports Team is at the table with Instructional Services and others to best work with and serve our schools. Believe me, these teams are formidable, and I'm looking forward to hearing more about their work as we move forward. And I'm also, of course, super thankful for the, to staff for the work they're doing to monitor the expenditures, our project management team and our Office of Audit General, our, you know, working on all of this and making sure we're staying on track. You know, and of course, our budget and grant offices are also monitoring expenditures. So we've got lots of people working on this. And I think that, you know, 50-page reports and the volume of presentation, you know, really speaks to that. So thank you, and I look forward to our work session.
Thank you. Agenda item, oh, Ms. Omeish, I see your light just went on.
A bit ago, but yeah. Thank you to staff for this presentation. I won't belabor the point, just in advance of our work session. I'd like to hear a little bit more about how, you know, that early on, when we talked about involving the audit team and then ORC, it was the idea that this would be an iterative process, right? And that the findings we identify would improve the way that we further utilize the funds. And I know, you know, Esther, or Ms. Cohen, you mentioned things about the accuracy of reported documents, other concerns that arose, even after only reviewing something like, what was it?
3 million.
50 or so, right, items in a system where it's far more than that, right? You said you did it stratified sampling or something. So I'm curious if you were able to find that in a small sample, what might actually be out there if we expanded that search? Or, but more importantly, how that was then adopted? You know, has that, has that been, have any recommendations that came as a result of those findings been adopted to such a degree where we're no longer concerned about that, right? That's kind of one of my thoughts. And then the other is the ORC piece. You know, some of the stuff that stuck out, stuck out to me specifically, the intervention was less useful for students who were identified. That's a big deal. I mean, we're, what is missing in how we supported those kids that were identified for these supports? I think that's something I would have really wanted us to delve a lot deeper into so that it can inform how we continue using those funds. Every day is still an opportunity, especially as we look ahead for our future budget, even if it's not ESER money. So I'd like for some thought to go into that, an investigation into kind of root causes, et cetera, for us to begin thinking about how we might do things differently or to hear about how things have been done differently. I did appreciate the management responses as an attempt to explain that, but these are pieces that I didn't entirely see outlined. And then the communication piece too, right? The problems with communicating resources. Do we know the percentage of tutor.com that's been utilized? Like, how many students utilize that? I know something was alleged earlier in public comment, but...
We do. I can, I can get the board an update. What we were discussing earlier was the usage between April and June, which we provided a report to the board on. So I can get you the updated numbers, though, and we are tracking that.
Yeah. No, I really appreciate all that's been done. This is obviously robust and trying to be thoughtful and evaluative. I would just say perhaps in the work session, if we could think about, you know, I'd love to see kind of a more specified, I don't know if it's a timeline, however you guys want to present it, of, you know, this finding came, this was the feedback and recommendation, this is how it was adopted, and this is what we discovered the next time. We reevaluated, we tried this new thing, and this is what we found. I think that shows the responsive nature of the iterative process that we said we wanted to engage in. So I think that would be helpful to me, and I'm sure my colleagues at the work session. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Omeish. I will move on to agenda item 5.01, confirmation of action taken and closed. This is a portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time will make one or several motions to confirm the recommended action. I call on Ms. Corbett Sanders for the motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who was charged with crimes related to a community-based incident and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Pikarski, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Pikarski, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Yernat Kofak, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Omeish, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, and myself, with Ms. Maron away from the table and Ms. McLaughlin absent. Oh, and Ms. Maron voted in favor too. So with Ms. McLaughlin absent, that motion passes. Agenda item...
Actually, excuse me, Chair. I was going to abstain once you called that.
Oh, I apologize. I thought you were voting in favor. So all those opposing, all those abstaining?
I will abstain.
Ms. Maron abstaining.
Right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item 5.02, secondary course offerings. I call on Ms. Keys-Gamarra for a motion.
Thank you. I move to postpone secondary course offerings until the November 14 regular school board meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Dr. Anderson, second. Ms. Keys-Gamarra, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes. The reason I asked to pull this off of the consent agenda is because I became aware from our community that languages were not easily accessible with respect to particular, to any of the classes. When you actually, you enter initially, you have languages you can choose from so that families can understand what's going on. But when you get to the actual course offerings, those languages are not available. My concern is that students who have families for whom English is not the primary language are placed at a significant disadvantage if we don't have this tool available, and their families are not fully equipped to understand their academic options or plan and map out their academic future. This is also in line with federal guidance that says that we have...
Ms. Keys-Gamarra, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, the motion is just to postpone, so the conversation should be about the reasons to postpone. So I just want to make sure it's tied to the reasons to postpone per our parliamentarian who's recommended that, so...
This is the reason to postpone.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was the question. Thank you.
Okay. Our classes have to address concerns of, I'm sorry, our catalog has to address concerns of linguistic diversity. So as a result, I have contacted Dr. Reed because it may, according to my conversation with her, it's not a difficult thing to change, but she did need some time to make sure that this was available. It's my understanding, when I discussed it with her, that she proposed to move this to the 11/14 meeting to address the problem. I also wanted to make sure I brought this forward before the board as a, what I hope is a simple matter, because there were significant numbers of people in the community who have been concerned about this. And so this conversation with our board today signals that we're addressing the problem. So if at all possible, I'd like for Dr. Reed to be able to provide additional information as to how she plans to move forward. But I simply wanted to allow her the time to correct this concern.
Thank you. I'll let Dr. Anderson speak, your second, and then let Dr. Reed speak.
Sorry, there's something. Okay, the light is not working. Can you hear me? My light is not working. It doesn't come on. I just really wanted to have more information. I have a question, and I would be happy for Dr. Reed to go first before I speak, before I pose my question, because that would be very helpful for me. So, Dr. Reed, if you...
Dr. Reed, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Anderson and Ms. Keys-Gamarra, I have spoken with staff about some workarounds in terms of linking the document to spot or place on our website, which would enable an easier translation for families and students that would require that. And I just wasn't able to turn that around this afternoon prior to the meeting. But the plan would be to provide some link, linkages to a site on our website to enable the translating as we have for other documents.
All right, Dr. Anderson, if you want to continue your second, and then Ms. Cohen, I have your list.
All kinds of mic issues. I think I'm a little bit confused. Is the question, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, the fact that the document is not available in a manner that people can't comprehend? Or is it that the course offerings are the problem?
No, the course offerings are not the problem. It's just that I want to make sure that that's not, it doesn't become, it isn't a continuing equity problem so that students can have full access, be able to talk to their parents as they choose their classes. And I just believe those partnerships are so important. The, and at any rate, I agree with Dr. Reed's solution, but I had two purposes for pulling this off. One is I wanted the community to understand we're working on it and to give Dr. Reed the time that she needed to address the problem.
Thank you for that. I'm happy to support this motion because it's really in line with the conversation we had earlier regarding that accessibility factor for some of our families. So thank you.
Ms. Cohen?
No, I'm super grateful for this to be highlighted, but I wondered if we could do a modification potentially. So I know everybody loves sausage at the table. But my question was, right now, our students are starting to meet in high school with their guidance counselors to already sort of just get the range of what's going to be available at their school so that our DSSs can gauge interest level to see what they will be offering. So I wondered about potentially, Dr. Reed, work with me here, a modification that we would still, with the board's approval, that we would still approve the body of what is happening here, that these course offerings, which include amazing things, by the way, if you haven't taken a look at them, please, please do, because one of the things they do is encourage our kids have had to make choices between some advanced classes to get the extra boost in grade point instead of advanced band theater, technical theater, orchestra. So this is amazing because it gives them the extra .5. It also does things like forensics, which has been offered as an academy program, would be brought back to base-level schools, which is incredible because then kids don't have to give up three class periods to be able to do it. So I just want to say to my colleagues, I'm so excited about these different courses. So I wondered if a compromise could be that we go ahead and give the nod to schools that the counselors do, you know, offer that as they begin these conversations this next week with their students. But the document is what has to get fixed. So of course, we want to support that. So is there a happy medium living in there anywhere?
Are you proposing a follow-on motion instead of pulling it? As an option could be, we pass it with a follow-on motion to have the document translated per Ms. Keys-Gamarra's request.
Well, I think, I thought what we would do is just keep the, I guess, Ms. Keys-Gamarra too, I want to be deferential, that we would keep the, approving the changes, but add the caveat, so I guess it is an amendment, add the caveat that the course catalog must be updated to be reflective of any different language choices. What do you think about that, Ms. Keys-Gamarra?
So what I would like to do, I'm not sure if Dr. Presidio is still there. I can't see very well on this little...
So if I may, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, to answer Ms. Cohen's question really quickly, then we can, because I hadn't...
Well, I'm trying to figure out because...
If I may, let me, it was Ms. Cohen's turn to speak. So after she's done, I'm happy to call on you next.
Well, she asked me a question, Madam Chair.
I know. I'm trying to get the parliamentarian to weigh in on the options so that way you can answer how you'd like to handle this. But if you want to go ahead and speak first, that would be fine. I can wait for the parliamentarian to weigh in afterwards.
Thank you. So here's the order of how this happened. This came to my attention. I took it to Dr. Reed. Dr. Reed asked for it to be on the agenda, I believe, on November 14. That's how we got where we are. So my question now of staff is whether there is an impediment of time, as Ms. Cohen is suggesting, because of course, we want, we don't want to hinder our students. However, I still have that equity concern when we can communicate with some students and not others. But I did want to ask our staff whether that's a concern.
Ms. Cohen, I know it was your turn. Did you want to...
Yeah, I just want to say, this is just the part where our guidance counselors, they meet with all of our high school students and our advisory sessions and whatever to start pulling conversations. So this is not about, I understand what you're saying about a general course catalog, but of course, our counselors are meeting with kids and speaking in the language that they're best able to, okay?
That's part of the problem.
Dr. Reed?
Yes. So Ms. Keys-Gamarra is correct in the conversation we had because I think, you know, the accessibility for students and families is critical. So my apologies for bringing it forward without that. To Ms. Cohen's point, timing is everything, and I believe that staff can remedy this tomorrow if this is a need. So I'm happy to accelerate our work schedule to meet this need because I appreciate it being raised, and I will make sure it gets done tomorrow if the board would choose to approve it tonight.
So my understanding from a parliamentarian is that we need to vote on the motion to postpone first, and then we can, if someone wants to propose a follow-on motion from the table, that can be done.
Point of parliamentary procedure. Could a substitute motion be offered?
Mr. Frisch?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Could a substitute motion be offered rather than doing...
I wouldn't recommend doing a substitute motion here. I would recommend, if you're going to try and vote, I would recommend if you're going to try to vote on the main motion, or actually, it's not even pending yet. Well, if you want to vote on it tonight, I would just vote down the pending motion to postpone and then take up the motion itself. And then you can add whatever follow-on motions are desired.
Point of clarification as well for the parliamentarian?
Dr. Anderson?
Would it be possible, would it be possible to just make an adjustment to the language here with that objection?
So, Dr. Anderson, this would be a motion to postpone, and so we would postpone, which means that the staff, my understanding, Dr., would not be able to move forward on these course offerings until we can meet next time.
My question is, would we be able to make an adjustment to this language to not say postpone, but to add what Dr. Reed has shared with the caveat that staff will have this ready tomorrow? Can we do that without objection so we're not voting a bunch of times?
If there is consent...
Go ahead, Mr. Morgan.
If there are no objections, you can, someone can just ask to not, to withdraw this motion without objections and then move forward.
So, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, if you're okay, can we ask for the objections to withdraw this motion? Then you, if you want, you can bring a follow-on motion to address the concerns that you brought to Dr. Reed. Would that be okay?
So, let me make this clear. My discussion with Dr. Reed had to do with fixing it in two weeks. If she can fix it tomorrow, by all means, I want it fixed tomorrow because I want every student to be able to have those meaningful conversations. That's what this is about. So I have no problem with making sure that we are in agreement. This will be addressed with, you know, forthwith within 24 hours or before Monday so that those conversations can take place and every student can have a meaningful discussion regarding their classes and involve their parents. So I absolutely have no problem with that because this was about the issue, not about passing a motion.
Wonderful. So without objection, I will ask for this motion to postpone to be withdrawn. Seeing no objection, this motion will be withdrawn. Ms. Keys-Gamarra, would you like to bring a motion, a follow-on motion? Well, actually, next, excuse me, I need to then take vote. I don't have...
May I make a clarification?
Hold on a second. Just give me one second, Ms. Keys-Gamarra. So I will wait. Go ahead, Ms. Keys-Gamarra. What would you like to say?
Well, if the motion is withdrawn...
Then we need to vote on the motion to adopt, and then you can make a follow-on motion. So we need to adopt the secondary course offerings. I'll ask the parliamentarian to weigh in. What was the procedure, Mr. Morgan, for handling this?
That's my understanding of where you are procedurally, that the motion for 5.02 that came up, the, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, was recognized to make the motion to postpone. That's been withdrawn through, I mean, it's consent. withdrawn through unanimous consent, and now you're on the 5.02. And a follow-up could be made afterwards.
So, I'll read the language on the screen, I believe, is what you're telling me to do.
Yes, ma'am. And then you can bring a follow-on motion as well regarding the change that you and Dr. Reed suggested. So, if, I'll call on Ms. Keys-Gamara for a motion.
Okay. I move that the school board approve changes to the list of middle and high school course offerings for the 2023-24 school year as recommended by the Course Review Committee and as detailed in the agenda item.
Is there a second? Ms. Keys-Gamara?
I'd like to, yeah.
We'll vote on this, and then it will be a follow-on motion that you can bring to address the conversation with Dr. Reed. So, we need to first pass this, and then we'll do the follow-on motion. So, is there a second? Dr. Anderson, excuse me, Ms. Keys-Gamara, do you want to speak to your motion, or are we, are we good?
No, I'm good. I think we understand.
Dr. Anderson, you want to speak to your second? All right. Well, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, if that is unanimous with Ms. McLaughlin away. I will call on Ms. Keys-Gamara for a follow-on motion, and if someone can help Ms. Keys-Gamara with the language, that would be helpful. I would suggest I move to direct the superintendent to, Dr. Reed, if you can maybe help with the language of what you and Ms. Keys-Gamara spoke about to...
I think, go ahead.
Go ahead, Dr. Reed.
I think that I would make, ensure that this document is accessible to all students and families.
So, if I may suggest, Ms. Keys-Gamara, the language is, I move to direct the superintendent to ensure the secondary school course offerings are accessible to all students and families.
By end of day.
By the end of the day.
Friday, November 4th.
Friday, November 4th.
Oh, somebody's writing it. Okay.
If that language is okay for you, Ms. Keys-Gamara, then we can use that as a follow-on motion to address the concerns you brought. All, Dr. Presidio?
So, I really apologize for interrupting, but I'm a little concerned about by the end of the day, Friday, November...
Well, you're not translating it. It's going on the website. It's creating a language.
And I can stay out of it. I just wanted to potentially raise, there might be more time needed to do that, so.
I think, I think we're good. It's going to actually be a communications solution.
So, I would like to, I'd like to ask the phrase, "to achieve linguistic diversity," because that's the standard. But I move to direct the superintendent to ensure the secondary school course offerings are available to students by end of day, Friday, November 4th, 2022.
I think it's available, accessible to all students, I think is the word, right? Not available? Yeah. Because the concern was accessibility.
I apologize.
The word should be accessible to all students, not available, because the concern was accessibility.
Accessible, correct.
Okay. Ms. Keys-Gamara, if you, if this language is okay for you?
I think, well, I would say that I move to direct the superintendent to ensure the secondary course offerings are revised to be accessible to all students by end of day, Friday, November 4th, 2022.
They're not, they're not revised or just translated and made accessible in other formats? Because it's got, I don't know if they're being revised, Dr. Reed?
We're, the plan that we're exploring, that we believe we can pull off, is linking them to the website where students and family members and caregivers can identify the language they want a document translated in on our website. So, however we want to characterize that, but we're not going to be able to actually verbatim translate these catalogs by end of day tomorrow, for sure. So, what we're looking at is being able to place them on the website and having our ability to translate them be live at that, on that location.
Okay.
So, may I suggest we just say accessible to all students on the website by the end of the day?
Well, I think...
I'm just trying to figure out where exactly...
We could, sure.
Or just, can we say just accessible? Because it's, would that be all right?
I understand the intent.
I think I may have a simpler way. I'll just say it once so people can hear it, okay?
Go ahead, Ms. Keys-Gamara.
I move to direct the superintendent to address concerns of accessibility online to offer the secondary school course offerings to all students.
Accessibility of secondary school course offerings, maybe? I would suggest if we have a common understanding with this language, that perhaps we can vote on it. Ms. Keys-Gamara, are you okay with the language as it reads?
There's some redundancy, but, and I hate to do that when we are an educational institution. However, I think we have a general understanding.
Actually, I think what I might prefer as language would be, how about, rather than having by end of day, Friday, we say prior to its usage with students. In other words, before we utilize it, it will be fully accessible. Because it may take us just a bit more time, but the commitment would be, we're not rolling it out till it is fully accessible.
All right. Does that work for Ms. Keys-Gamara?
It does, and it addresses the concern that I had, which was trying to make, I didn't want it to be accessible to some students and not others. So, thank you, Dr. Reed.
Right. Because I'm seeing staff are starting to wriggle in their seats behind me, so...
If I may, Ms. Keys-Gamara, if you'd like to read the motion, and we can get a second, and then we can hope you take a vote.
Wrap this up. Okay, thank you. I move to direct the superintendent to address concerns of online accessibility of secondary school course offerings to all students prior to its usage with students.
Is there a second? Ms. Corbett Sanders. Ms. Keys-Gamara, do you wish to speak to your motion? Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
I think everybody has a common understanding now.
So, with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, that is unanimous at the table, Ms. Maron, Ms. Keys-Gamara, with Ms. McLaughlin away. That motion passes. Thank you very much for all your work in bringing that forward, Ms. Keys-Gamara. Agenda item 5.03, 2023 FCPS State and Federal Legislative Program. I call on Ms. Corbett Sanders for the motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, everybody, for your patience. I move that the board adopt the 2023 Fairfax County School Board State and Federal Legislative Program and Priorities.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, would you speak to your motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you so much. It's a great pleasure to make this motion tonight on behalf of this whole board. As you know, it's important for the board to review its legislative package annually to ensure that we are proactively addressing legislation which may be introduced in Richmond or in DC over the next few months or year. Mr. Malloy is one of the most respected voices in Richmond, and we appreciate the time that he took with each one of the board members to discuss their priorities. These were brought to our work session and amended based on that discussion as well. As you can see, the legislative package is quite extensive. The reason for this is because of the fast-moving pace of deliberations in Richmond. We need to both advocate for changes that provide better supports for our students' success and employee recruitment and retention, and proactively provide our position on items that may come up in the course of deliberations. This year, we continue to focus on student success to include early childhood education, increased staffing for English language learners, graduation requirements for out-of-state students transferring into Virginia, and supporting post-secondary bridge options, safety and security to include road safety in front of our schools, driver's education, and cybersecurity initiatives. And as in previous years, we also took, we also asked state funding to support these initiatives, including support for the RAP-Back program, which is being implemented in Virginia by the state police while shifting the per-employee subscription costs and administrative costs for background checks and ongoing monitoring to the localities, and funding the, funding those measures to combat opioid threats impacting schools across the Commonwealth and the country. The state legislative program is aligned with the county's legislative program and our federal program, which my colleague, Mr. Frisch, will speak about, as well as funding for federal programs such as Individuals with the Disabilities in Education Act and Impact Aid. As you know, Madam Chair, that our colleague, and I know, Madam Chair, that our colleague Laura Jane Cohen will be making a motion to amend the package with your seconding to reinforce the important role of parents in the IEP process. Rather than speaking to that amendment, I will just say here that I unequivocally support the language as drafted and believe it strengthens the package by adding clarity to the language in the document you have before you. After that amendment passes, I hope that the whole board will fully support the amended package for adoption.
Mr. Frisch, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I am happy to second this motion. I think Ms. Corbett Sanders provided some great context for our overall legislative agenda as this year's federal liaison. I'd like to take a moment to zero in on our 2023 federal priority positions. Broadly speaking, our federal agenda prioritizes support for full and adequate funding to implement federal mandates such as those found in every Student Succeeds Act and the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, as well as broad flexibility to empower states and localities to fulfill mandated program requirements. Specifically, the board supports mandatory funding for chronically underfunded special education programs to meet the federal commitment to fund 40% of the excess costs of special education as promised but never realized since the 1975 adoption of federal special education laws. We also support increased funding for the federal Title I Part A grant within the Elementary and Secondary Education Act that serves schools with the highest percentage of children from low-income families, increased federal resources dedicated to cyber and data security for school and school division technology infrastructure, restoration of enhanced USDA federal reimbursement rates to resume the provision of high-quality and nutritious free meals to all students, full funding for the Federal Impact Aid Program, which is intended to offset the local impact of Fairfax's more than 19,000 federally connected students, as well as those associated with federal military base relocation decisions, continued federal funding to help school divisions address the ongoing effects of COVID-19 pandemic, including funding dedication, dedicated to remediation and learning recovery, special education services, technology, and broadband provision, social emotional supports and services for English learners, and repealing the U.S. Department of Education's final rule under Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972 released in May of 2020, and in the interim, returning to the pre-May of 2020 rule. I look forward to working with my school board colleagues and our congressional delegation in the months ahead to advance these critical federal priorities. And like my colleague, Ms. Corbett Sanders, I won't speak to the amendment, but I do support it, and I think it will make it a stronger legislative package.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. I will call on Ms. Cohen for an amendment. Oh, sorry, excuse me. All the board members wish to speak to the legislative agenda? I see none, so I will call Ms. Cohen for an amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to amend the main motion by adding, while preserving current requirements for parent guardian involvement, partnership, and consent to IEPs to Section S, Special Education, Number Four, to read, "The FCSB supports adherence to language and IDEA, asking states to minimize the number of additional rules, regulations, and policies imposed upon local school divisions above and beyond the requirements already imposed by IDEA, while preserving current requirements for parent guardian involvement, partnership, and consent to IEPs."
I will second this amendment. Ms. Cohen, would you speak to your amendment?
Just briefly, there has been some whisperings at the state level that there will be a push to try to remove parents from the IEP process. And so, we just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that our priorities are right where we think they should be in ensuring that our schools can effectively support our students and their families, but also making sure that we do not support any legislation that would cut out parents and guardians' involvement and partnership and consent to the IEP process.
Thank you. I will speak briefly to my second. Parents are a vital part of the IEP process, and parental consent ensures that schools make sure parents are vital and guardians are a vital part of the IEP process. I've often said that the, outside of the student, the only IEP team member who is consistent from year to year is the parent or the guardian. They know what conversations happen in the IEP meetings where the IEP was developed, even though it's being implemented by a different team, because it's often developed in the spring to be implemented in the fall by a different team. And they were the only consistent one outside of the student when the student is part of it. Generally, who is, who knows the conversations, they're the ones who live with the student, they're the first caregiver, the first teacher of the student, and it is vital that we have, that we protect in our IEPs parent involvement and parent participation and parent consent. And without that parent consent and participation piece being spelled out, it is sometimes all too easy to, to sort of, people are busy and to sort of move past that. But the consent part of it, make sure that parents have the power and that imbalance of power sometimes. When you go to an IEP team meeting and there's seven experts at the table and you on the other side, it helps to make sure that you are a true partner in that. And I've been in that situation many times, and that consent piece is vital. So, I think it's really important that this board stand up explicitly for parent participation consent in the IEP. So, thank you.
I see no other board members wishing to speak. So, with that, I will call for the vote. The amendment is on the screen. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That is Ms. Omesh, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Darnat Kofax, Dr. Anderson, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Pukarsky, Ms. Maron, and Ms. Keys-Gamara, all those with Ms. McLaughlin away from the table. There are no noes, there are no abstentions, so that amendment passes. I will go back to the main motion now, which is on the screen. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Pukarsky, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Darnat Kofax, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Omesh, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Maron. That passes with Ms. McLaughlin away from the table. Congratulations to our two liaisons. And Mr. Malloy, thank you very much for all your hard work. Agenda item 5.04, solar power purchase agreement for Annandell High School. I call on Dr. Anderson for the motion.
I move that the school board approve the implementation of a rooftop solar power purchase program at Annandell High School and authorize the Division Superintendent and the Interim Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services, either of whom may act without the other, to execute the SOLA PPA and administer the contract on behalf of the school board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Frisch, Dr. Anderson, would you like to speak to your motion?
Extensively. Thank you. This is an exciting time in FCPS. This is, while we are celebrating it, it is still a preliminary step in the environmental efforts in FCPS. This PPA, Power Purchase Agreement, is to install a roof-mounted photovoltaic array at Annandell High School. Annandell High School is expected to be the first of many schools to receive roof-mounted solar installations, and will serve as the pilot project for FCPS to develop a working knowledge of these installations. Schools are selected, I'm sorry, schools were selected by the vendors, by the vendors based on a number of categories that contribute to the campus's overall solar viability. These categories included the roof type, the roof age, and solar generation capacity. The selection of Annandell High School as the pilot school was proposed by two separate vendors. vendors, based on their own review, and agreed to by FCPS because of its high solar generation potential. In addition to Annandale High School, FCPS staff are working with these vendors to develop project proposals at several other schools before the contract period expires on December 21, 2022. Once the contract period ends, annual renewal options are available for up to four years. FCPS and county staff have tentatively agreed to a contract renewal in 2023 to allow more time for solar project proposals. After the PPA contract for Annandale High School is awarded, the vendor will conduct a physical inspection of the school, including the review of engineering, technical, and structural documents. Again, if this motion is approved this evening, OCCR will engage the community for feedback on each solar panel project. Once the PPA contract is awarded, there will be local engagement by, of all, community members to ensure that they understand the process for the site selection and installation. OCCR will also seek to enhance community support for each project prior to final, prior to its final installation. And also, OCCR will ensure that this project is encapsulated into the capital project engagement process that has recently been updated. Annandale's PPA represents the initial stage of a community engagement plan. The proposal will provide energy cost savings projected over the course of the 25-year, of the 25-year term, and a significant portion of Annandale High School's annual electricity requirements during that period. The proposal has since been reviewed and verified by the Energy Solution Division of CMTA.
Dr. Anderson?
A third part, I'm almost done. A third-party engineering firm that has evaluated.
Would you like some extra time?
I'm almost done.
Would you like some extra time, Dr. Anderson?
I, I, yes, I would like some extra time.
How much, how much time would you like to have?
I have three more sentences.
So 30 more seconds?
30 more seconds is fine. A third-party engineering firm that has evaluated and advised FCPS regarding projected energy savings and other aspects of the proposal. Installation will, for the most part, be scheduled during breaks, summer, winter, and spring, to minimize learning disruptions. Staff will also be able to properly assess the vendor performance and the project supervision after this pilot program is begun. Thank you.
Mr. Frisch, would I just speak to your second?
Yes, thank you. In 2015, three Madison High School students, Casey Grage, Sam Resin, and Joyce Chang, approached Susan Stillman, a tireless local advocate from the Sierra Club, to talk about bringing solar power to our schools. That conversation resulted in the creation of a student-led group, Solar On the Schools. In January 2016, they began testifying at school board meetings. These and other students told the board about the educational opportunities and saved taxpayer dollars that solar panels represented. Equally important, they eloquently addressed the moral imperative of combating the climate crisis. In the years since, those first advocacy steps, dozens of students from Solar On the Schools have testified at school board meetings, carrying a consistent message of necessary action. They also began testifying in the Virginia General Assembly, successfully encouraging state legislative, state lawmakers to remove caps so local governments and school divisions could move forward with solar and other clean energy initiatives. In 2018, the school board passed a resolution praising our Board of Supervisors for their work to bring solar to the community, pushing federal and state lawmakers to make the process more smooth, and for our Facilities and Transportation Department to aggressively pursue new conservation opportunities like solar. Last year, the school board unanimously committed the school division to participate in Fairfax County's solar program and to take all necessary actions to nail down a contract. Since then, division staff has worked very hard to bring us to this point. I'd like to thank Superintendent Reed, Assistant Superintendent Fanshawe, and the entire facilities team for their work in recent months that brings us here today. I know I speak for many of my colleagues when I say I am excited to be voting for the solar pilot program at Annandale High School and look forward to its expansion across our school system, including the next set of schools, Chantilly High School, Hayfield and Robinson Secondary, Thro Middle, and Terracette and Mason Crest Elementarys, all slated after Annandale. Moving this pilot forward and committing to its expansion across the entire school division is an essential part of meeting the board's goal of carbon neutrality by 2040. It is also our fiduciary responsibility to move forward. As I note, whenever we talk about these green initiatives, conservation efforts to date help Fairfax County Public Schools save annually $8 million a year. That's money that goes right back into the classroom and student success. To adjust, to address the climate crisis, every level of government must act. Tonight's vote is further proof that our board is committed to doing its part.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. Ms. Tolan?
Thank you. I was happy to work with Mr. Frisch and Dr. Anderson to be able to speak to this, this evening. They have told you the technical reasons for doing, for, for voting positively for this, and I wanted to just focus on recognizing some that have been so influential to get us to this point today, where we finally have a contract we can sign to begin putting solar panels on our schools. Years ago, Susan Stillman, who's already been mentioned, and she's here this evening, began working with our Madison High School team to promote this idea. Since then, she has worked with many, many students over the years and is still working with our students. With our current work on student wellness, we are hearing from students that one thing they need is a longtime mentor that will work with them and nurture them over the long term. This is what Susan has done, and I know for certain that many of the students she worked with ended up in college pursuing STEM careers. Just what we might hope for. Also, rolling on in my career with Get to Green, and we started hearing from the Faith Alliance for Climate Solutions about our energy management and transparency on energy expenses. They are one reason why we have an energy dashboard for every building, and they have kept us working on our promise to utilize renewable energy in our electricity portfolio. Our county counterparts, counterparts, Dan Stork and Penny Gross, help Carl, Frisch, and I keep FCPS moving toward renewable installations as well. I also want to thank our energy management team, under the direction of John Lord and Justin Moss, for their continued efforts to move this forward. I also want to thank Chuck Fanshawe and Dr. Reed for giving staff the green light in a way that Mr. Frisch and I could not, to finally dig in and make this happen with our new vendor, Ipsen. I cannot wait to see how this progresses. It's been a long time coming. We have heard from so many students that want this, and I thank every one of you. Most recently, we had three McLean High School students at our conversation with Dr. Reed that expressed interest for this, and of course, we had our two students from Rachel Carson tonight. They are working with our colleague Kirk Treacle, who runs the Carson Green team. He has worked with this team for many years. So also, a huge thank you to our school-based staff that work endless hours to inspire our students to be better stewards of the environment. Thank you. It's an exciting evening.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and I am so glad to see you here tonight, Ms. Stillman. I remember the very first organizational meeting of the JET in which we were really talking about this and how this would come about. And I just am so excited that after we had set the initial goal of 159 schools to have solar on their roofs, and that goal was set back in, I believe, 2017. I know that we've had some fits and starts since then, but I am very happy to support this initiative tonight. But I did want to, I spoke with Mr. Fanshawe earlier today about the number, because there was some discussion that there were only seven schools past Annandale that we were talking about. And so, you assured me that the 159 had not gone away. It was the initial phasing where it was these seven schools. And so, I wanted to assure the community that this was not pulling away from that. And it also is important, we talk about the important voice of our students in getting solar on schools, but there's a secondary component of this, and that is the curriculum, the workforce development curriculum in not only sustainable technologies, but also that there is a very large workforce opportunity for the installation of solar, not only on our schools, but across the Commonwealth. And so, I am optimistic that we will be looking at adding this into our workforce curriculum as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Ms. Maron? Maybe the hand is up from before. Ms. Keys-Gamara?
Yes, um, I'm, oh, sorry. Go, go ahead, Ms. Maron.
Are you okay? Okay, thank you for sharing that, Ms. Pukarski. Um, I was just going to say, maybe you're off right now?
Ms. Maron, Ms. Maron, we're having trouble hearing you. Ms. Maron? We're having trouble hearing you. Ms. Maron? I don't think she can hear us. Ms. Maron? Yeah. Ms. Keys-Gamara, do you want to go ahead while we try to get Ms. Maron's mic adjusted? Ms., Ms. Madea, can you? Oh, hang on, Ms. Keys-Gamara, I apologize, we can hear some sound now. Ms. Madea, can you maybe text Ms. Keys, Ms. Maron or call her? Thank you. Ms. Maron, we can't hear you.
Oh, can you hear me?
If you maybe come a little closer to the mic or turn your volume up, it's kind of coming in.
Okay, are you there?
Yes, we can hear you now. Go ahead.
Okay, I was saying such a wonderful thing, so I guess I'll just come around, I'm sorry. Um, this has been a long time coming. I'm glad that we're able to advocate students who are on solar on the schools and have long since graduated and probably have college degrees by now, but I'm excited to keep moving with this, and I hope we can keep working with our county to do even more faster and bring renewable energy resources to our school division. It's the right thing to do, and it's the financially savvy thing to do. Thank you.
Great, Ms. Keys-Gamara?
Sure, just really quickly, of course, I support this fully. I just wanted to ask Dr. Anderson, the maker of the motion, whether she was also given a communications plan for the community.
Dr. Anderson?
Thank you for the question, Ms. Keys-Gamara. There is a preliminary communication plan, which OCCR has developed, and that will need to be fleshed out further and to shared with, and be shared with the entire board, so that it is specific to the site. So Annandale's plan will be different from Chantilly High School's plan, and so that is going to be coming in the near weeks, I guess, they get started if we pass this this evening.
Go ahead, Ms. Keys.
Okay, I look forward to that report. I know some of the concern that community members have had in the past is that there is variance from one project to the next, and I'm not sure that there should be. So I'll just look for that update with respect to how that is planned, and we're, we probably will also discuss it in CPDC. Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing no other hands up, I will call for the vote. The motion is on the screen. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Ms. Omesh, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Maron, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Darrenak Kofax, Dr. Anderson, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Pukarski, and myself. That motion passes with Ms. McLaughlin away from the table. Agenda item six, Consent Agenda. The adopted, our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda, listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. The consent agenda items are on the screen. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Agenda item seven, New Business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote on these items this evening, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. The new business items are on the screen. Keep a question? Agenda item eight, Board Committee Reports. The next agenda item is Board Committee Reports, and I call on Ms. Tolan for an update from the Skip Committee.
Skip's committee executive team met yesterday to prepare for our December 7th full meeting of the committee that will be held in person at the new Sully Community Center. FCPS and county staff have been looking at developing a program called Opportunity Youth. The purpose of this is to assist the over 9,000 young people in our county that are not in school but are unemployed and need assistance for training to successfully get into the workforce. We will, this is at the beginning, but I do want to thank Dr. Versidio and Karen Williams on our FCPS staff for coordinating with the county to work on this project, and we will have a briefing on this with more full information on December 7th, and then every report more fully fleshed out in the winter of 2023. In addition, I want to give everyone a heads up. We were told by the Skip staff, the county staff, that they will be giving a presentation regularly to the Board of Supervisors Health and Human Resources Committee, and we are hoping to develop a more regular way for Skip's info to get to the school board. So Ms. McLaughlin and I will be working with the county staff and Dr. Frances Ivy to consider options that we can bring to the board for making sure everyone is fully informed of Skip activities. Thanks.
Thanks. Sorry. Thank you, Ms. Tolan.
I'm done.
Agenda item nine, Board Matters. Next on the agenda is Board Matters, and I call on Ms. Pukarski.
Wow. Okay, thank you. It is quite late. People do need to go home. I will say, for anybody who'd like to know all the wonderful things I've done these last two weeks, please sign up for my newsletter, and you will also learn about the wonderful things happening in my district. Happy Veterans Day, and thank you to those who have served. Good night.
Ms. Cohen?
Ditto.
Mr. Frisch?
My staff aide is going to kill me because she worked on such wonderful remarks, but we will use them in a newsletter this coming week. We've had a lot of great experiences and a lot of great school visits, but we'll hold it.
Ms. Darrenak, oh, sorry. Ms. Omesh?
All right, that's, no, no, I'm not talking. Don't worry. I, what I did want to do, yeah, Happy Veterans Day to those who serve, of course, military families experience specific challenges in their kids. But really, just want to remind everyone, daylight savings on Sunday, don't forget. And then also, Election Day next week. Definitely, definitely make sure you go out there, make your voice heard. Early voting is through Saturday, so you still have an opportunity also at the various government centers across the county. But otherwise, I'll leave my commentary for the night.
Yes, thank you. Same as Mr. Frisch, my staff aide prepared lots and lots of very exciting awards, et cetera, for Drenzel students, but I will stick to Happy Veterans Day to our military families. Please participate in the activities that your schools have available, and I'm looking forward to that. Tomorrow morning, I'm attending the Longfellow Middle School Shark Tank event. Can't wait to see what the entrepreneurs at Longfellow have in store. And tomorrow night is the Langley High School, McLean High School football game. The Highlanders are hosting their crosstown rivals, the Saxons. Hope everyone has a fun and safe time at the game. Good night.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I too. We'll be brief. I do wish all of our community members a very happy Veterans Day. I look forward to being at Fort Belvoir next week, both for the Garrison Commander's celebration as well as the celebration with our students at both the primary and upper schools. I do have a question for Ms. Darrenak Kofax, since I participated in or enjoyed last week's football game between Mount Vernon and Hayfield. This week, you have Hayfield and Edison, both schools where we have students from Mount Vernon. It will be fun to see which jersey you'll be wearing, and also, we have a nice little competition with Lake Braddock in South County, so it's going to be a fun Friday night.
Ms. Darrenak Kofax?
So that's interesting that you asked that. I was at Hayfield today with Delegate Mark Sickles, and I toured many classes with the principal, and including eighth-grade civics and math, and AP Government and Cosmetology. And when I was, it was very fun because... And when I was, it was very fun because they're so, they were at the computer looking at my profile and asking me questions, and they're like, oh, you had somebody that graduated from Madison. Oh, you're the vice chair. You know, they're just like, the questions they were asking me. And so, you know, as the mom of two eagles, I have to say, I love my hawks, but I'm going with the eagles. I can't, my kid's graduating from there.
I did wear orange on Tuesday.
I wear orange a lot, and I love the hawks. But Battle of the Birds is always a big one, and you gotta go.
So. You can just change, like, each quarter.
Each quarter, I could.
Thank you. Happy Veterans Day. Thank you to all who served. Have a good evening.
So I'm the last one, and I'm a little sad that quite a few of my colleagues are not here, and I'm pretty sad that quite a few of the staff aren't here at the end of this meeting because I felt I had something very important to share. But I'm going to share it anyway. In the last few weeks, I've had many conversations, and very few of those conversations have centered the students. And so I was sent this by FCPS grad of 2022, who's also my son. And he asked me to read this and share it. So I'm going to. And I am sure there are people who will not be happy that I'm sharing this, but I owe it to my son, a student with autism, to share his words. He speaks through music. And so this is a song he wrote two years ago. "In this world, I matter for all I'm not. A boy with words locked, the boy with autism, something to be fixed. I'm a limited view, not a boy with gifts. Words I say are secondary. Can't you see past the ordinary? Words don't define my sanity. Joy is the role in my family. I matter for all of my humanity. I matter for all of my humanity. Tears and fires, strengths and desires, I have it all, can you see? Tears and fires, strengths and desires, it's all in you, and it's all in me. I should matter to you because I matter to me. I should matter to you because I matter to me. The beat, the groove, that's my mold. Can you feel the music in my soul? Autism doesn't mean I'm off key, and it's not all that matters about me. In music, I find my harmony. In music, you hear my humanity. Hold a mirror on you. It's me you see. Tears and fires, strengths and desires, all that's in you is in me too. Tears and fires, strengths and desires. I have it all, can you see? Tears and fires, strengths and desires, it's all in you and it's all in me. I should matter to you because I matter to me. I should matter to you because I matter to me. The world you see is where I also breathe. I matter for all of my humanity. I matter to me. I matter for me. I matter for you." This meeting is adjourned.